I hear music.
How you doing?
Good. Hey.
First thing we're doing today is we have a presentation from the Parks Commission. Uh, and I whoever I heard. Yes, I'm ready. We're ready. And what I heard was everybody's doing every fifth word. Is that right?
I will help something so very cool.
Um.
Oh, I will do that.
Mayor and staff and fellow. I am welcome to the Park Commission and I here with the.
And we can't hear you.
Hey.
Thank you. I'm here with the entire Parks Commission. Uh, we're going to tell you about an opportunity to build a universal design trail in Riverlands Park with the help of up to $200,000 in recreational trails program grant funding. As you know, we've received two RTB grants in the past. We use them in Cochrane Mill Park. The two grants together um added to $200,000 plus we had a $50,000 match provided by the city for a total of $250,000 of investments to improve Cochrane Mill Park. And in the years since that $50,000 investment from the city has brought huge, huge, huge benefits in many, many ways. Um, and we even received a national award for our work. It was for outstanding use of recreational trails program funds. Some of us uh actually made a trip to Washington DC to rec- to receive that award. So it's really a big deal. Um, today, each of the commission members will tell you something about this proposal. And so first, we've got Pat Lesko is going to tell you about universal design trails.
What do we mean by universal design? The goal is to design a trail usable by all people to the greatest extent possible, which gives everyone the opportunity to enjoy the great outdoors. In this case, we're talking primarily about a walking trail that is accessible by people of all ages, including those who walk with a cane or crutches, or those who use a wheelchair, or young children in strollers and tricycles. There are three primary design features to consider: the surface material, the width of the trail, and the slope of the trail. The surface of the trail needs to be even, firm, and stable, so that it's not deformed by indentations such as by wheels on a stroller or wheelchair, and not damaged by expected weather conditions or normal wear and tear. The width of the trail must be give a minimum clear tread width of 36 inches, which is the width of one wheelchair, and with wider intervals for passing or resting or just enjoying nature along the way. The whole trail can be wider, of course, to permit for easy passing or to allow users to go side by side. The slope of the trail has two aspects. In terms of elevation change, the maximum slope at any place along the trail is generally set at 5% or less. A side to side or cross slope is also necessary to prevent water damage and is generally between 2 and 5%. A universal design trail is smoother, wider, and less steep than many trails and is not practical in all landscapes or locations. However, I will speak to the benefits from personal experience. Our family vacations have always centered on being outdoors and visiting parks of various kinds. Now that my husband's mobility is diminished due to his stroke, we search out and are very grateful for places that have trails he is able to navigate safely. Next, next up is Clifford, who's going to talk about the need for universal design trails in Chat Hills.
Hello. Uh, so I'd like to focus on two populations that will really benefit a great deal from this trail design. The first is is the the one that comes to mind right away, the elders in the community and those with uh with disabilities with mobility challenges. I'll also speak briefly about children because I think that's at least as important to think about, although we might not think so much about strollers in terms of getting getting out into the woods. I've lived here for 17 years. I love the the trails dearly. One thing I can say about them, though, is if you're if you face mobility challenges, your options in this community are precious few outside of places such as Serendib where there's obviously walkability on the the road, along the roads, sidewalks. Uh, really, you have to go to Tyrone. The closest I'm aware of of a of a place where you could you can actually get out sort of into nature is to go around the pond in Tyrone. I've I've done that. There's lots of people out out there. Actually, it's great. It's a long drive relative. And and it's certainly not really in nature, particularly. There's water. So, uh, interestingly enough, the median age here in Chattahoochee Hills is 51.2. I get to speak as an elder on the other side of that a little bit. But uh, as we think about that, there's a large number of of uh elder community members here. And many of them are facing situations where they're no longer able to get out in nature. And for them to have the opportunity to do that, to be able to see the river, to be able to encounter wildlife, uh, you know, I I won't go into the research, the abundant research on human health and well-being, mental health, et cetera, that comes from being in nature. And I think it's really important to provide that that sector of our population with an opportunity to do that. Uh, the younger folks, uh, maybe some of you are familiar with E.O. Wilson's biophilia hypothesis several decades back uh as kind of restated and emphasized in uh Richard Lube's book No Child Left Inside, Last Child Inside. I think it's been a while since I read it. But anyway, Richard Lube's work um is a is a great example of looking at what are are we're facing culturally right now, which is last child in the woods. There we go, uh, which is that children are spending more and more time indoors. And really, what's important is to get young, really young children out. There's a natural innate fascination with nature. And just because a child is only one or two doesn't mean that getting out into nature isn't really important. It's really invaluable. So to have a trail that that can be again where where a parent can push a stroller and begin a a a legacy of taking their child outdoors, getting their child outdoors and and engaging with the world about around them. And as we as we see new development going up, as we see continued development in Serenby, there's an increasing population of parents with young children here. So I think it would be invaluable for both sectors to serve them uh more more in in our parks than we currently do. And I think this is a fantastic plan for doing that. Uh, now to look at the financial benefit of this uh grant, Chris Jones will be speaking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, I'm just going to be touching on three quick bullet points here regarding the financial aspects, as Deanna just indicated. This process had already been duplicated right at Cochrane Mill Park. So our match or our request is for a $50,000 grant or request, and we will receive a $250,000 grant at that park. You know, so that is a tremendous increase. So we talked about and put in what 20% and we would get a grant of 80% return investment with that. And kind of give you a little context in terms of the financials, in terms of how great Cochrane Mill Park has been as we look at the last two years in terms of financial impact. Uh, and 2022, we had a little over $97,000 in terms of revenue from that park. And 2023, up to date, we have a little a little greater than $106,000. So we're talking about an increase of possibly about 12% increase. So you're talking about continued on that forecast that yields nothing but a great return for Cochrane Mill Park, not Cochrane Mill Park, Chattahoochee Hills with Riverland Park. So it would be a great financial investment. And also top, one though aspect that you cannot quantify is that you'll be able to alleviate some of that stress off these additional parts to add over to this new park here too as well. So just a continued benefit to Chattahoochee Hills. Uh, and at that point, I would turn it over to Chip that will be talking about why build this trail at the Riverland Park instead of Cochrane Mill Park.
All right, I'm I'm reading this for Chip because his voice is gone. All right. The Riverlands Park construction is very important to our city. As can be seen from the traffic in Cochrane Mill Park, there is a demand for recreational spots in the form of parks on the south side of Atlanta. A view from Cochrane Mill Park on the weekends sees most of the parking spots taken with many out of county tags, which means the demand for parks is drawing many visitors from outside our city. So the demands on Cochrane Mill Park are increasing almost daily. Parks benefit the community with physical, mental, social, and environmental factors. A February 2022 study by the Urban Institute shows that parks have a major impact on health to the local community as well as healthcare savings. Park usage usage have shown reduced anxiety in individuals reflecting on the mental health of the community and another major benefit in our high culture, in our culture of high stress. We have an opportunity today with Riverlands Park to increase these benefits to our community with a large leap forward as well as taking some of the wear and tear of our beautiful Cochrane Mill Park. I hope you will support the ideas and plans of your Parks Commission and the future enjoyment of our city in the form of our parks, in particular, Riverlands, as we grow. Thank you. Thanks, Chip. Sorry, sorry. Forgot my point. And next up is Roland Austin, who will explain the concept plan.
And everybody got a mute handout because we um changed some of the verbiage on it. That's the only difference. So I have to crouch a little bit. There it is. All right. Not used to electronics. Anyway, um, if you look at the plan, um, this was a GPS walk, what you see here over the TPL's current plan from pond. So some of the trail kind of mirrors that and some of it will probably move based on what the final TPL design is. It was it was kind of hard to tell at this point. Um. The trail itself is this, I kind of got an idea, but I'd do this at six feet instead of three feet. So it's double with a mulch side on it. Part of it will go through the woods. Almost all of what you see in the yellow is on the same level, believe it or not. If you stand at one side of the park to the other and look, you can see it's pretty flat, except when you get to cemetery. So none of it will go down to the river because it's too steep, but you'll be able to see the river from part from two parts. And then along the way, there are three different stop areas that one would have a um possibly have an over like a canopy, tin canopy with a bench in it so you can stop in the shade. The other at the other end might have a picnic table in the middle. Um, and then there's there'll be a slight boardwalk at the point where we overlook the river so you can stop and maybe a bench there too. So and then, oh, part of it would follow the asphalt drive. And then the last part would be the surface. Um, more than likely, it could be like tailings, like asphalt tailings or crush and run as opposed to concrete or asphalt um with a weed barrier under it to keep maintenance load. So the the idea this is to keep the city from having to maintain something. So volunteers would maintain it, I would think, like we do at Cochrane Mill. So any questions?
Roland, how far is the um, I guess the two big green blocks are the new pavilion and restroom, right?
Yep.
So how far is that from the accessible parking? Do you know? It looks like a thumbs with, but.
Yeah, the way they had, the way TPL has it laid out, it looked like it was a walk. And from I read their documents and it appears to be a mulch trail. So I think it'd be more important to have either parallel along with that uh and a uh universal design trail. So because the handy or accessible parking is a bit far away from the restrooms. So.
But that's on them not, yeah.
Yeah, and I haven't seen the final sign. And we might find out tomorrow, you know, that, what they have. So.
Well, um, so I walked the trail with Roland and Pat this last weekend, and I really like it. I think it's going to be um, it's got some nice views. It's level, so it's not real strenuous. Like you said, we've we've got enough strenuous trails already. So as a senior, you know, I I liked it.
And it's it's with all the with the extension, it's about a mile. So.
I mean, we've been talking for years about having that that trail that everybody can use. I love the idea of doing it here.
Yep. And then I know it was mentioned in Cochrane Mill, we actually flagged a couple of years ago the same trail in Cochrane Mill. And then that's when we decided that was right at the height of COVID. It's just too much traffic over there to put it there. So plus, we get the benefit of having restrooms, a kiosk, parking, all done for this. So which is awesome.
What from a from a budgetary perspective, what's the timeline of this?
The grant.
Yep. And and Diana, you're going to speak including remarks anyway.
So I'm sorry.
Um, so the first stage of the grant application is due November 1st. So we have less than two months to put that in. Um, it will be next fall before we will find out that we've gotten the grant if we get it. So it'll be at least a year before we get the funding.
Okay.
And and at that point, all the work that Trust for Public Land is doing will be done. So we will be able to see on the ground what we've got to work with.
And this is one of those typical grants where it's a match of, I mean, it's a combination of money match and time match and the thing like we do with the other RTB grants, right?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. And.
And but Diana, the the city staff can't be included in that match, right?
That's true. And it and it was different when we had our other grants, but they have decided that the city staff work cannot count towards the match. Volunteer work can.
Right.
Or if we hire other professionals, that can count, but the city staff. Are there other questions?
No, I just think it's a great idea. And especially when you include in all, you know, all people, people with wheelchairs and stuff. Because a lot of trails, you know, people in wheelchairs or any kind of handicap, they're not able to participate. So that is awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I I think, I mean, personally, I'm happy just to put that in the budget because it's, you know, two years budget from now that this would be that the match would be in. Work probably one year to two years from now, right? Because you can do some of that.
That's right. We have two years to finish the grant, and it is a reimbursement grant. So that means we have to spend the money and then we show them how we spent it. And if we spent it the way we said we would, they reimburse us. So it would be at least a year before we would need um the funds, the matching funds. And I believe the hotel motel taxes could be used since this is for a park and it brings visitors to our community.
Diana, just.
All right.
Does this put the RTP grant put any limitations on us historically, like there was a little bit at um Cochrane Mill Park? So if the city decided to do something with the Varner House in the future, even if they decided to take it down or remodel it, do you know if like the state historic preservation thing has anything at all to do with this grant?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Um, yes, the um the Department of Natural Resources, which oversees this grant, will send our proposal to um the historic.
Preservation.
Preservation for the state, and they have to approve it. And so what you're referring to is when we wanted to change the bridge in Cochrane Mill Park, we had to get permission, special permission to do that. Um, in this case, we are not planning to change uh anything historic. Um, so I don't think they would have a problem with our plan.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Diana, just out of curiosity, uh, the the city staff didn't even participate in sit.
Um, if they were volunteers, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yeah, that would be.
Not that I'm volunteering.
It's just.
I was just asking. Yeah, there it will just be you have, but.
Trail could be toy built.
Yeah, there there you go. Yeah, you want to be built like me, rather.
I got, I got, yeah. Any other questions?
It's a solid trail. Come on.
So we cannot do this without your support. And that's why we have come today. We need to hear from each of you. Will will you support the application? Will you support the $50,000 match? Because if you won't, then we're not going to write the grant. We'd be wasting it. So do we have your support, Vivi?
Yes, you do.
Richie?
We've always had much.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'm going to have a vote, but you always have that.
Laurie?
Sounds great.
Camille?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. We will get to work. And by the next meeting, we should have a more information about the grant application.
And we'll put a placeholder in that budget for some chunk of that match, right? And when we get the grant, then we'll be ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate always all the work you guys do. I'm not sure if it wouldn't have been more effective every fifth word, but that's. All right. Uh, next up is our agenda review. And do you have folks here or does it matter? Oh, concert. Oh, perfect. All right. So I was going to go ahead and um move forward. The item number.
Thirty percent. Now that's pretty cool.
Twenty-six, twenty-three oh-two-six, which is the uh the hotel motel tax issue for the hotels because we do have some technical support on Zoom in case we had questions for them. Uh, Garni, do you want to preface the conversation?
Sir, um, hi, everybody. Welcome to Marathon Thursday, right? Um, so kicking off the conversation around the hotel motel tax agenda item that's on your packet that's under unfinished business as this has been on the agenda for several months as we've been working through the mechanics with the CBB. Um, I don't want to, I know that we have a long work session agenda and then we're here at six o'clock tonight. So I don't want to go through every single word um and every single page. We did, um, the teams worked pretty comprehensively to put forward fact sheets and details in your packet to review. And I know some of us have had conversations. Um, I think if I boil this, try to boil the subject down into like the three parts that this is, and then I'll invite the two people who are on Zoom um to speak to current market economics. Um, I think the first and really important component, not only for you all to hear, but for everyone in the audience, and I'll reiterate this tonight, that while the city is very new, new in terms of not age, but thinking about economic development and the components um that a city will do to to participate in economic development in order to grow a tax base, a hotel motel tax incentive is very standard, right? So if we were to go to um even our close Douglas County that did this for Fox Hall, the project hasn't happened, but Douglas County to Atlanta to Alpharetta, um, those cities, Alpharetta, for instance, if you're familiar with Avalon, Avalon received an incentive like this at 8%, so not even the 7%, but 8%. And that's with the established population base that's in Alpharetta. Uh, so number one, really touching on, this is very standard um and standard for a city to offer. Um, number two, um, and this is we're all uh in a moment invite John Davis with JLL and then Lance uh with Patterson to speak to, so you're not just hearing it from me. Um, if you're paying attention to what interest rates are doing and the overall market, this is about the toughest time to go raise funds and get bank loans for any project, hotels aside. And so without um and a really revenue share or incentive like this from the city, it's it is likely to 100% probability that neither of these projects will go forward. Why is that important? And number three, and really where I want to make sure there's 100% clarity, the top of the fact sheet, and I think this is what's most important for the city, for you all and for our citizens. Um, it's this tax incentive is not giving money to the projects. It is allocating dollars that would not otherwise happen in order to create property tax that won't happen. So both of these projects currently today, the land that sits under them, pay about $400 in taxes to the city. Once they open, so at opening, in the first 15 years, they will generate approximately $130 million of taxes for the city's use that you currently do not have planned in any budgets or performance. Um, those are dollars that you all will have to be able to decide, do you roll back taxes? Do you protect land? Do we do more parks? All of the things that do we pave roads, right? Do we buy police cars? Um, that's $130 million that Serenby will not otherwise generate. We don't have the ability to without these projects open um and that won't come from anywhere else in the city. So it's effectively a windfall as a property tax base for the city and cannot happen without this incentive. Um, I'm going to ask because uh one of the peoples on on a trip and taking time to be on Zoom to speak to, I feel like it would be helpful, but I want to make sure you all do to hear from two people who are out in the markets, talking to banks and talking to um equity, right? Because we'll have to have investors in this. Neither of these are projects that like Steve and I, that the Nygrun family has the ability to fund from a dollar standpoint. So we're having to put together funding packages that will go out to the marketplace, that will go to banks and will go to other of other investors. Um, John and Lance, who are on the call, are actively in those markets and can speak to just the difficulty and why this incentive is needed. Does that feel helpful?
So I just want to know what the dollars are.
The the dollars. What what do you?
What I mean is is out of $100,000 of tax revenue generated, you're talking about just 8%?
Right.
So that's where they grant us. That would be trying to see how this money moves.
How the how the hotel motel tax moves or how the property tax moves?
The percentage that you guys are wanting to help fund these projects, like out of 100 grand.
So out of.
Much of that money.
Correct. So the hotel motel tax is 8%. Out of the 8%, the ask is for 7%. Seven of eight. It's typical in projects to give eight of eight. So like Douglasville granted Fox Hall eight of eight and Avalon, Alpharetta granted um the hotel that's in Avalon, eight of 8% in order to happen. So we could have come forward and asked for the full eight of eight, and that's market standard, but wanted to leave 1% in that will go to the CBB.
Great. So so my question is, I I so on that number out of 100 grand.
Yep.
The answer is seven thousand.
Uh. Granted, even revenue for the hotel.
Correct. Correct.
So if the numbers are like that, how does how does seven grand add up fast enough to even help get to 130?
It doesn't. Oh, it doesn't add up fast enough. It's basically, it's basically what takes a project from being barely viable to viable.
Okay.
Financially.
On the financing side.
On the financing side.
Talking about coming to the cities, the property taxes.
Right.
Because that's guaranteed on the hundreds of millions.
Yeah, they're looking at it. Property tax is guaranteed because the value of the property is increased in a basis that like.
Yeah, I get that. Yeah.
So yes, from the loan standpoint, this is the final thing needed to make.
Thirty versus seven grand. I'm like, eh.
It's kind of like the last 1% to make it viable to go to the market and raise the money. It's okay, great. Um, John, I think I'll invite John Davis if you can. Do you have to unmute?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, John, we can hear you. If you could introduce yourself briefly, just uh the company that you're with years uh in the industry. And then just to kind of a brief snapshot of what you're seeing in the marketplace.
Sure. Thank you. Um, this is John Davis. I'm with Jones Lang LaSalle. Uh, we're one of the largest companies worldwide uh as far as real estate services go. Um. I've been in the mortgage banking space for 10 years. And before that, I was a banker for 20 years and all focused in commercial real estate. I've been in the Atlanta market uh for the last 25 years. Um. I can tell you that since the great financial recession of 2007, 2008, today's market is certainly the toughest uh that we've seen from a financing perspective. Um. The combination of higher interest rates, higher construction costs, banks that are having issues with liquidity and with credit problems, all this has combined to really, really put pressure on liquidity for new commercial real estate developments. Um, I can tell you that JLL, we're one of the largest hotel financing companies uh in the world. Our hotel financing business for just this year is off between 70 and 80%. Uh, it's just a very, very difficult time for for hotel financing. Um. Having incentives like the hotel motel tax uh rebate, property tax abatements, those kind of things are critical, really to help offset. Um, you know, the higher interest rates, higher construction costs, um, you know, hotels are having higher staffing costs. Uh, there's just a lot of pressure right now on new developments. And having these incentives is critical uh for lenders to see. Uh, it helps them with their economic analysis of each project. Um, I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions that you guys have. Uh, we're excited to work on this project on behalf of Serenby. Uh, we're very familiar with it. We've been uh working with this group uh since probably for over a year now in understanding what they're trying to develop. We're excited. We think that these niche products in these unique markets uh are going to attract lenders. Uh, the lenders that are out there who have liquidity, who are interested in um in providing financing. However, these, I I just don't think we can get it done. And I've made that clear uh to the Serenby group that I I don't think we can get it done without these. And I've made that clear, uh, to the Serenby group that I, I don't think we can get it done without these, uh, incentives. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to, uh, to answer anything for you.
Thank you, John. Lance, I'll invite you as you're on Zoom and have been listening to speak as well. So for clarity, um, the two projects are occurring under different groups. Um, and so, uh, John Davis, who just spoke is working on the Selvorn Hotel project. And Lance, who I'll invite to, yeah, give a brief on who he is, is working on the Motto Destination Spa project.
Great. Thank you for the introduction. And I'm going to ask as well, can you hear me? Okay. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you Lance.
Oh, he's on the phone.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, so my name is Lance Patterson. I'm the CEO of Patterson Real Estate Advisory Group. We are an Atlanta-based commercial real estate capital advisor. What that means is we help our clients find capital for the acquisition or the development of commercial real estate. We've had a strong focus over our history on both residential and hospitality projects. I am working on the Wellness Hotel. I've been helping put together financial models, preliminary outreach to capital and thoughts on the capital structuring of the hotel as well. I have been in Atlanta like John for now 30 years and I'm, uh, in my 40, first year of my career, almost all of which has been spent as a commercial real estate finance person. I would echo what John said, there have been five or six pretty difficult periods in the last 40 years in my career. In our industry, this is at least the second most difficult. And I think you could make an argument, it's even worse in some ways than in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, for all the reasons John mentioned, but it does not mean it's impossible to get things done. You just have to work hard and you've got to get help wherever you can get help. And these incentives that we're talking about, both the hotel motel, uh, tax rebate and the property tax abatement, I would echo what John said, I believe are critical to getting this project financed. I, I agree that they are very typical in other projects. The hotel product type itself is even in the best of times, a very difficult type of property to finance new construction. There are many, many fewer lenders and fewer investors who will consider investing in hotels. And then you combine that with the current economic environment and it just makes it that much more challenging. So we would agree that these are critical incentives in order to get the, the hotel, uh, the wellness hotel that we're working on with the Serenby, uh, Serenby People Finance. Uh, just one other thing at least, as it relates to this property, we were in, I, I've known about Serenby for many, many years. I, I met Steve, uh, probably 15 or so years ago. We're both very, very involved in a number of, uh, real estate associations and organizations throughout the Atlanta region. And so I've known about Serenby, but I was introduced to this particular property by the hotel management company that will be managing this wellness hotel that gets developed. Um, it is a very, very high-end property. It's a very unique property. It'll be a fantastic property if it gets developed. Uh, but it's one that they will not do many of within the continental United States. As, as of right now, there are none that are open, that are part of this hotel management company's brand. There is one underway in New York. There will be some others, but they're trying to determine where they think the best likelihood is of getting these things financed and done. Uh, they clearly like Serenby, but they also are looking at other locations. Um, and so it, it just to have these sorts of, uh, tax incentives for the Serenby Hotel, we think, uh, will be important as they're considering, uh, locating the hotel here.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Lance and John.
Thanks, guys. Uh, just a couple of points, just again, clarification, just questions that have come up before. And I want to be sure everybody's a hundred percent clear. The only money that we're talking about here is money from these particular hotels. So it's not money from other hotels in the community or anything like that. The money that would be going into this would only be the money coming from the hotel motel taxes on these specific hotels. And again, that money doesn't exist unless the hotels are built. So it's not money that we have that's going anywhere. It's only money that's a piece of what we would be getting if, if they were built. Fulton County Development Authority has already, uh, gotten, gotten through Fulton County, a property tax offset. So the Fulton County property taxes are being foregone for this as, as their contribution to the program. They're not asking us to do that. So that's the big benefit for us is to Garni's point. The second these things get built, we start collecting property taxes on them and they're significant numbers. So, but they don't happen unless the hotels get built.
And, and I think important to note, um, Fulton County, the Fulton County passed this unanimously, which is rare for Fulton County vote. Um, usually you have one or two people who don't think that the north side of Atlanta needs assistance. Um, but it was unanimous because they all agreed that while we all appreciate what's south of I-20 and understand how beautiful it is, um, very few real estate developers and very few funders, right? Are willing to take a risk on, uh, quality projects that are south of I-20. And so they see this as a catalyst, not a catalyst for explosive growth, but a catalyst for quality commercial projects, um, that with these, we can be a leader to demonstrate to the capital markets and to real estate developers, um, that, that quality commercial projects can happen in South Fulton County and in Chattahoochee Hill country, where otherwise no project like this is, is on the table, south of I-20.
So Garni, I'm just trying to make sure like right now, the property tax that we're getting from this is like $400. So we do nothing in 15 years. It's only $6,000, but if we do something, we could come up to 130 mil.
Correct.
Speaking of, okay, thank you.
Right.
Are we expected to do this moving forward? I know they're talking about a hotel on Creole Road now.
There, there will be no, this would be, there, there is no precedent. So this is, there, this is a case by case basis.
Um, and I get that what I'm doing, this is just, just a question out loud, I guess, as future development. Since we're already talking about a hotel on Creole Road, is this what we expect to do for? Cause I imagine whether Steve builds it or somebody else builds a hotel, the numbers are going to fall into, in line, pretty much the same way. Those kinds of figures, because it's just what we're to expect moving forward with the one coming on Creole Road.
Generally, generally, if you look at other markets, uh, you'll get other places in the region. If you've got a place that's stuck where they can't get a particular type of development to happen, they'll incentivize one. And if that does well, then the other ones that come in don't have that problem getting financing because the point's been proven. You can make money doing this thing there. It, it's not normal that it would be every hotel forever. No. You never.
We're not obligated.
You do the math each time.
No, I know. I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
The normal conversation moving forward with the developments coming, that's all.
Is, is there any, believe legal implications to, uh, in favoring one project over another?
You have to, each project has to stand in its own accord. So there are certain criteria that have to be done as far as public benefit, it's the tourism. So if another hotel wants a similar incentive.
Right.
They'll have to come to the council and they'll have to present their case.
Right.
And so is it compelling? Is it not compelling? Each one stands on its own.
Do you, do you know of any, uh, you may not know, but do you know of any instances where that was brought up in a suit?
Lawsuit?
Yeah, lawsuit. I mean, I mean, we're, we're always reminded here at this table that one, once we, you know, we can't do this spot thing as far as, you know, favoring.
Yeah, spot zoning.
Yeah, I understood that.
This again, um, Serenby group has made their case. It's up to you guys to decide what they're asked. Right. Is that sufficient to incentivize as a request? And let's say the next one comes in and they make a complete change. It's going to have to be somewhat different. This is in their.
Sure.
Different location, maybe going after a different client, I don't know.
Right.
And I believe that it's the same criteria, basically what is the public benefit?
Right.
You know, that is an exchange for the gift.
Right. I'm just kind of like, I guess the tech Richie was taking up down along those same lines. Didn't want to open a door, you know, Pandora's box or something that we could close.
And we're telling.
I, I don't see that.
It's a 10x return.
But I mean, I, I do, I would fully expect that if this is. That the next person, like I said, we guys did this.
Right.
Of course, the responses we did because of ABC, you show me the E F. You know, that for the next project and we'll consider it.
Yeah.
Now, if you.
Well, what if they do offer apples for apples?
Excuse me?
What if they do offer apples for apples and it lines up? Do we still have a leg to stand on with the knife?
Well, when you're dealing with real property, it's never apples, apples. So every piece of property is different. Okay.
Okay.
And so every project is different, but I would, if I'm sitting in this seat and there's another applicant comes after this one, I'm going to be advising the council, you need to look at what is the public benefit in exchange for the gift? And that's it. That's a individual decision.
Sure.
You know, there's no right line test for that.
Right. I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting in some label bottom mark, but.
I don't see that Troy, but I understand it from something, but I don't, but I don't see that being, uh, something that, that, that would prevent this. I do see it as something you need to take in consideration for any future requests.
Yes, sir.
We're going to do it.
So Garni, are these two projects, um, being worked in tandem or individually? So if one does not get the, I mean, we approve this, but if they don't get the financing, can the other one still go forward?
Absolutely. So, um, in tandem in that active work is occurring on both of them, but they're not tied together from a financing standpoint.
Got you.
And again, if it, if it doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen.
Doesn't happen either, right?
Right. And Tom, I had a question for you. So, um, and thanks for clarifying. You're asking for seven percent, one percent goes to CBB. How, how does a DMO get funded? Is it from that one percent or?
The DMO would be a piece of the eight percent, right? So one percent goes to the CBB and stays there. And the DMO would be a piece of the other seven percent. But that's, that's a.
Is that at a later point after the hotels are?
We would have to set that up before the actual tax transfers start happening, right? It's just a mechanism to make that happen.
But they're not getting a full seven percent then, a, a portion of that's going to fund the DMO.
But the DMO, no, the DMO, it just goes through the DMO back to the deal.
Okay.
What stays with the CBB is the one percent. That's the one percent that doesn't go back to the deal. The seven percent all goes back to the deal. There are just legal structures that you have to set up to make that happen. And Rick's already on top of all that.
Right. And what we're going to have to do, Laurie, no matter what, separating apart for the Serenby Act, okay? Is if a DMO created before the general assembly, um, goes into session, if we're going to get the 80%.
Right.
Okay. So that's a separate part of this. I got it.
They're walking in tandem, but they're separate items.
So I think I have a question for Rob. Probably the one that did the cool bar chart in here or is that you?
Our, our team did that. Not sure who's.
Somebody's playing drums on the mic.
So if I'm reading this right, if the second hotel meets its anticipation start date by about 2027, we should be, am I reading this right? Collecting close to half a million in property taxes by that time, right? So we don't have to wait 15 years to start realizing income.
Oh, no, sorry. The, the, yeah, when we refer to the, absolutely yes, is the short answer to your question. Uh, the reason that we're using the 15 years, it aligns with the ask for the incentive.
Okay.
To demonstrate what you'll be receiving during that 15-year period.
So, um, I had this conversation with you and I just want to mention it. Um, when we talk about, like Rick says, evaluating the benefit to the community, uh, Serenby is certainly a huge benefit to the community, generating 60% of our current tax revenue. But for a lot of residents, I think especially in the rural area, for them, they'd also like to see something tangible, something they can open a door and walk into, or something that has some, some type of heavy personal interest to them in the rural community. And we talked about what potentially could be done with the property tax as it starts to come in. And this would totally be a council discussion for the future, but that you guys had these really cool ideas. I just wanted to share that what the council could consider is taking a portion of that property tax to start off with and funding the city's TDR bank. So, uh, while it's taking other developers a while to ask for TDRs, they don't need them. Serenby doesn't need them. If the city had funds in their TDR bank, it could actively go out and purchase at-risk farmland. For example, it could protect that whole corridor on Rico Road or Rivertown Road. That would be a huge benefit. And I think people in the rural district would begin to see that connection between development and how it protects our city. And another thing you guys brought up in our discussion was it could be something tangible in the parks or it could be historic preservation of a couple of our buildings that have just been sitting idle, like the Beaver's House or the Scout Hut. All that to say, it's just really valuable to have the opportunity to meet with developers and, and toss around some ideas I hadn't even considered before this. And so I, I, I just wanted to bring that up and thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. Yeah, I, I'll, um, comment on that to say that nothing would make us happier at Serenby than from the values that we're creating that are, are generating additional tax dollars. To see those go into the city in a meaningful way to pull the vision of keeping it rural and appreciating our view sheds and parks and structures that are out there. Um, that's just a beautiful win-win that happens, that we don't need those tax dollars to go back into Serenby's infrastructure because it's all private. And so I think that's another just important point for everybody to note. And this was on the fact sheet, but that you'll have a lot of municipalities where projects like this are happening on public roads, where a city would be expected to fund the infrastructure that supports these projects. Serenby is privately covering the infrastructure that supports these projects from lift stations needed for, um, for wastewater, from roads, et cetera. So the benefit of that is that you all aren't having to allocate tax dollars back into that infrastructure. You get to put it out into the city and into ways that you're demonstrating that are even more dynamic than, than one would maybe currently think with the current budget.
The other thing too, is just to, you know, beyond the fact that we need something like this to break a log jam for quality development here, things that we haven't been able to get funded anyway else, is also just the straight up economics of the investment. The, the foregone taxes that we're talking about, again, all these taxes that we only get if the project gets built, but the, the taxes that we'd be giving up for this 15-year period compared to the net present value of the taxes that we're going to get from the project is about 10 to one. So it's a 10 to one return on our investment, using money that we don't even have, right? It's, it's a, a no-brainer. It was. Anyway, any, any other questions? We've got all the folks in the room that can answer them. Uh, if not, thank you, Garni, very much.
State. May I ask state a question?
Of course.
State.
Richie.
Well, just, what do you think about, I know you have your, your development down there. And I, after hearing the guy with the sushi shop and everything, talking about how, um, get customers and all this stuff. I mean, just your opinion, a, as a developer with the big development going, how do you feel about all these other ones that are being permitted as far as competition goes? Does that, does that bother you that another monster is going up on Creole or Fox Hall is trying to come in?
I'm sure you've gone to buy a car or pickup. Wherever you go, there's a bunch of car dealers on the same row. The more that happens here, the better it's going to be. I opened the first restaurant in Roswell in 75, first liquor license. And within a year, there were two more restaurants getting ready to open because of the business we're doing. And everybody said, oh my God, aren't you worried about that? And as each restaurant opened, our business increased 20%.
Yeah.
No, I, I welcome what's going to happen because the only way, now you have to have quality development. We have to keep our buffers. We have to keep our ratios. But if we don't have development, at some point everyone's going to get tired. The value of property, the value for TDRs for small landowners to sell, isn't going to happen if we don't have development. So the only way we're really going to save 70% of this 40,000 acres is for development to come in. That's the unique thing of what we did. There's no way we're going to save this area. There's no place in the country. Look at metropolitan Atlanta that's been able to save 20% of the land. You, 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 you just can't financially figure it out how to do it. And it all gets destroyed one way or another. And if we don't get enough development to execute our plan as planned, we're going to lose this. And so that's why I welcome more development. I'm not worried that it's going to affect us, but it's going to secure. Today, the only permanently. Today, the only permanently preserved land that any anybody in any of your districts can count on in this entire city. Is our parks. And what has already been entiled, and that's only Serenby. And that is, I guess you've entitled the, you know, cane, so that guarantees seventy percent of that, provided they go forward or the you that lose that. That's the only thing that's protected. Everything else could go to the wind. So, no, we welcome it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Moving, moving along. Uh, so we'll go back to the beginning then. Item twenty-three dash oh three four, which is the rezoning uh. Of the hundred and seventeen acres. Uh, Mike, wanna?
Mayor and Council, of course, you're familiar with the the project we had first read a month ago. Um, we had the applicant here or any, any questions? Um, that we're couching it in a little bit different terms than uh than a month ago. Um, uh, as an expansion of the adjacent district. Uh, Cedar Grove Phase Two is an existing H M R district. This would be an an expansion of that zoning district, so it would take it. An additional hundred and seventeen acres on top of the existing sixty-nine would take it up to a hundred and eighty-six point four four. Um, when you approve Cedar Grove Phase Two, you approved a couple of variances for them. Um, related to uh uh amount of open space that could take place off-site, um, district minimums. Um, this actually solves both of those problems. Um, they wouldn't have needed those variances if this came in. Hand in hand with that, it all would have worked under, under our code. So they no longer would have. An excessive amount of off-site open space, um, and they would be over the minimum district size, so um. Uh, this expansion sort of solves that problem for um for them. Not a problem. You solved it with the variance, but you understand what I'm saying. It brings it into line. Alignment with the um with code. This application actually does request a different variance for the ratio of. Residential to non-residential development. So no requested increase in developable footprint, no decrease of open space. Only a change in the ratio of what kind of development can happen on the already developable land. So um. Uh, uh, while ago, you approved a uh two special use permits in there for a uh. A country inn and a special event center. Um, the original plan for that would have taken up. More land than they would be allowed for non-residential use um in a hamlet district. And so the ratio allows them to um. Put those uses on um uh more property than the hamlet would have allowed, but it's still those same uses. There's been some um, some discussion of also maybe a um. A uh, a club, uh clubhouse for members, right? A community center for the, for the residents there. And um, perhaps a little bit of additional service, service retail, you know, everyone, you know, likes to talk about maybe coffee shop, you know, that kind of thing. Um, in there, it would allow them to spread that out a little bit instead of just having to go vertical on their country insight. If they have a little bit more land. And again, any land they use for that would be a reduction in the land they can use for residential, so. Um, uh, the amount of additional open space, protected open space that the the city would gain would be ninety-three acres. Um, if this is approved, um, the request is for four point eight total acres of non-residential uses, um, which is what the variance is for. Um, and uh, let's see. The um. Uh, expanded district, um, the proposed development is already in discussion with the Cedar Grove Estates folks about. Extending some of their public water supply up into the proposed hundred and seventeen acres. So that they would be able to develop um half acre lots instead of one acre lots based on the health department requirements. And um, if this uh expansion is approved by um according to the conditions, the two would would be required to link to each other. So. When Cedar Grove Estates was approved, there was a um, uh, an easement, not just an easement, a a um corridor. To the north or uh uh eventual potential expansion as we require, when there's. Serious property, large, where there are large pieces of property adj- adjacent to one of these developments. And um, the proposal um plan you can see has a a cul-de-sac going toward the south. Very, very close actually to where that corridor is currently shown. Now, Cedar Grove Estates hasn't been plotted, so they can still move some pieces around a little bit. Um, but those could easily line up through um uh through that uh that space, and that's one of the requirements in the proposed conditions. Is that those road networks connect. So Cedar Grove Estates would gain two more entrances. El Baroso would gain an additional entrance. Um, and they could um also you um coordinate their uh their paths. Um, as as well. And so it's it's kind of a, I think, a win-win for both those projects. They each get uh, they each get something out of that. Um, also, the other sort of benefit to um Cedar Grove Estates is they would no longer be required to have that buffer. Uh, on the, on the north side. Now, that's what's in their concept plan. If they want to make major changes to that, they would have to come in with a, for a concept plan revision to be approved by you. But they can move some pieces around, around the margins. In fact, that quarter I described, we'd probably want them to widen that. Which may mean they might want a couple of those lots to maybe get a little bit deeper, but they're showing a path. Currently in their original concept plan, we would. Still want to see that and um wouldn't, wouldn't approve serious changes without them getting a a concept plan approval. But it could, it does give them additional flexibility in how to use that uh, that that part of the property. Um, so those are the proposals. As I say, we have our applicant here. Um, I have had discussions with uh James Nicholson from Cedar Grove Estates. Um, about the um couching this in an expansion, about the water, about the road connection, and he's been positive about it. Um, uh, I I thought maybe he would be here today. I think he's gonna be here tonight for uh for the public hearing. Um, I'll try to check with him between the two to confirm that, but uh, um, I told him, and he also told the applicant that he was planning to be here. So I think we'll see him tonight. Um, if you have any questions for him, but uh, if you have any questions for me or the applicant, we'd be happy to talk about it.
And I'm almost sorry to bring this up here. If normally we have time between the work session and the thing. But the whole idea of a district expansion, when I read that, it just befuddles me. I don't understand it. Could you give like a a two minute? Thing on that?
So the short of it is, there's not really a difference, except that they coordinate. Um, the H M R district is the only district that has a maximum district size, three hundred acres.
Is each development its own little district though, or it's like when, when they, when Deer Hollow joined Serenby, they joined.
Became a part of Serenby.
So Serenby has its little district. So this has its district.
The only place we have two adjacent um uh zoning districts that are the same together are Series, which was Pepper's originally a special district.
In the hotel.
And then Serenby, so they don't share any numbers or any, they can't um share development rights, at least as we have it now. Because it was originally a special district. We got rid of the special districts now. It's kind of its own hamlet. It lives under its own terms. Serenby lives under its own terms, and so it's not an issue. Um, we could easily see it as a, as a single. Uh, a single district. The reason for couching it as an expansion right now is because. The maximum district size for residential hamlet, and the reason for the mass ma-. Maximum district size is because. We as a city don't really want to be a bedroom community. If you're going to have a big district, the district really needs to become a hamlet or a village. And so there's a maximum on the residential hamlet, and um to avoid this problem of. Residential hamlet right next to residential hamlet, right next to residential hamlet, which would mean essentially no maximum. There is a, a required separation. Between them. They can't be within um uh five hundred feet of each other. And so um. Uh, if this were to be approved as a separate district, well, it couldn't be. They'd have to leave a five hundred foot gap. That really doesn't help anybody. Doesn't help either of these districts, doesn't help the city. So these two districts together don't go over that three hundred acre maximum, right? They fit within that maximum. So there's no reason really to not see it. It's only better if they coordinate and and it becomes um, it becomes a s- a single district. If you're inclined to approve in the first place.
Means too that the Cedar Grove folks now, because they're being, gonna be connected, they have a coffee shop that they can access inside without going external roads.
They retain their own identity, right? Okay.
Yeah, this, this is great, Mike. At the end of the day, we're fixing something, zoning change.
That's right.
Project was going on. Person had no idea. So in essence, we're doing the right thing and solving two.
That's right. That's right. I will say this, and I'm sorry to add a little bit of a complication, but if, for example, El Baroso came in and said, oh, let me do some off-site open space. I would be inclined to evaluate them separate because the original development got their own variance, right? They're allowed. So he should still be allowed to have his twenty percent offsite. So I say now that it brings it into conformance. But if he requested to do some offsite open space, I don't think it would be appropriate for the city to deny him his portion of that right, right? Because again, the other development, but it does, at least for now, as proposed, bring them into conformance on both of those.
Exactly. Thank you. Found the direct solution.
Anybody else have any? Got everybody here. All right, uh, next up are two. Kind of uh uh pro forma legal issues on the Murphus stuff. Mike, that's, you're gonna talk about that as well. Relating to the park land and Murphus compliance.
That's right. So we have two proposals um uh comes out of the uh Riverlands project. Uh, for camp and paddle trails at Campbellton Park and Riverlands Park. Um, these are within the two thousand foot wide. Murphus Metropolitan River Protection Act corridor. Um, so they're required to be reviewed by the regional authority, the Atlanta Regional Commission. Um, they went through that review and uh we received from A R C a declaration that they are in conformance with the plan. And uh, the process just requires city council to confirm that finding. And before we issue any permits on this. So there would be a land disturbance permit and building permit for the bathrooms. Um, that would follow this, but before we issue those, we just need council to confirm. The A R C finding that they're in conformance with the requirements.
So again, these are, these are the grant, the the things that we need to be able to actually do the work that Trust Republic Land is paying for to improve both of these parts. So. It's just a legal checkup, the box kind of thing. Uh, next up is twenty-three dash oh three oh. Uh, and this was the conversation that we were having about. The, the commission members for the historic commission and the Parks Commission. Uh, and you know, there's been several different layers of conversation around how those rules could and should work. We've got a thing right now where we've made decisions. And made changes in our, in our internal ordinances that are not necessarily perfectly aligned with what the charter says. Uh, and and so again, we have this opportunity to either make a decision that. And and there are three options that that we've talked about now. One is leave it the way that it is. Basically clean up the language so that it supports what we're already doing, which is the council gets to decide who they want to put on those two commissions. And if there's somebody that doesn't live in the city but somehow is. Very related to the parks or or whatever it is that brings some benefit, we can elect to put that person on the commission. Another option that uh came up in our conversations in the work sessions around this. Was the idea of, you know, if we have somebody that's on a commission that for some reason moves out of the city or whatever, that they're able to stay on for the, the remainder of their term. And then the, the third up possibility was just that you have to live in the city to be on any of our commissions. And uh, again, I I I've gotten the impression from the group that. Most of the people in the group are comfortable just leaving it like it is. Council doesn't need to put somebody on if they don't want, but they should be able to put on who they want. Uh, but but again, I'm I'm putting that out there because we have the opportunity today to decide. For either, for any of those three options. And then we can correct the language in our documents to support either of those, any of those three options. So. Ruby, do you have any strong thoughts one way or the other?
Um, I actually like the way it is. You know, we can leave it like it is, but the problem I I see is that. We don't have a lot of people in the city to volunteer. And and it requires a lot of work to volunteer, so. You know, who's gonna step up to the plate? And that's, you know, the question I have.
Especially if there's a skill set, right? Richie, any particular thoughts?
Yeah, I think the um. I think, you know, of course, we were dealing with uh the lady in historical commission and Mary Beth Wonsen, two very. Unique situations. Uh, moving forward. If you don't live here, you shouldn't be on a committee. Um, I don't want an outside trying to thaw, trying to dictate what we do here. I would rather hear from my citizens and. Somebody lives in Alpharetta because they have a skill set. Where we we've, we've got skill sets down here and we can find volunteers.
Sure. Um, yeah, I I agree with Richie. I think we have enough skill set down here, but I actually like option two. So if we've had someone on the committee that lived here. And they moved out and they still want to serve. I don't have a problem with that. Finish out their term. Yeah, yeah, finish out their terms. But uh, I would like the charter to be changed to clarify that um. It should be residents nominated to the committee.
Yeah. I mean, originally, originally when I was thinking about this, I. I'm just thinking about future commissions, like an environmental commission, right? Maybe when we start working with T D Rs and and land preservation, things like that. And I I didn't really see. A huge problem with it, the council had. The ability to pick that person or allow or not allow that person that we may or may not need. But it would give us, I I just felt like that would give us a little flexibility. Because it is nice. Sometimes we ask for volunteers. Often people really like, they're like, I'm not just volunteering my time. I, you you know, if if they're not on the commission and they're not playing a role and you've got to pay them or whatever, they want compensation for their time. It's a nice way sometimes for people to be on a commission and get that help. So. I really thought that this, this. Uh, new addition that says that we might, we may be able to do that if needed. Would sort of be benign because we would have the control. So that, that, that's kind of what I was thinking through. I didn't think it would be anything where we're being required to pick, to allow it.
Yeah, just very clear uh shortcut, I believe in three, really. I think we just need to make it uh people that live in the city period. So we have enough people.
And if you move, serve. I mean, people move, can't really help.
Get replaced.
Something happens.
Because you're moving outside the city. And I understand, I'm sure they might have a whole lot more to contribute, but.
That's, that's, again, that's two different things here. And and what I'm trying to get to is, there's three people that are thinking the same way. That's the motion I'll put forward. So I'm hearing two saying that if you, if you uh move out, you can finish out your term. You're saying no, you'd rather just keep it. Like either you're here or you're not.
Maybe if they move within twenty miles, you move a hundred and.
I I can, I can go for that just for brevity's sake here. I mean, it's really not that much difference. Yeah, I mean, it gives, what, what is it, a four-year term? Yeah, okay, so.
It's every year.
I'm sorry, yes, that's right. Oh, if it's every year, yeah. Okay, well, that makes a huge difference. Okay, yeah, if it's every year, yeah. Yeah, there, there's no sense in that.
So I'm, I'm just, the devil's advocate position on this is, we have had in the course of the time that I've been doing this, two people that were, you know. That we all agreed should be on the commissions that they were on.
Right.
And what we're doing here is we're taking away.
We didn't all agree. The council that then agreed.
I'm sorry, fair enough. The council agreed. That we wanted to have those people on. And what we're doing now is saying.
No.
To this council and future councils, you can't do that. Of course, the future council can change the rule if they want to, but sure. But uh, again, you know, you're taking something out of your hands that you've used before. Just, just saying.
Great, but I mean, we, th- those two individuals brought something to the table. And you know, that was ridiculous, Mary Beth, on the other side of the screen.
But I'd imagine that you would never put somebody in that didn't bring something to the table, right?
Correct, but I, but my trying to thought is, you know, our population basically doubled in fifteen years. We can find somebody.
We can, yeah, okay. So, so is it the one then that says that people finish out their term?
Two.
Two, okay.
Two, yep.
That's.
Tom. Alright, so I'm looking at the packet. I only see two options. One. That all planning commission members have to be residents. That's a requirement of the law.
Right.
But then the um city council could. Um, appoint a non-resident. So that was option one. And the second one is, nope, everybody has to be a resident. I don't see where they can finish out their term as a third option that's in.
We amend that second one?
I would have to amend the thing to say that.
Can we do that?
Because this is a, this is an amendment to the charter.
That's right.
And it has to be. Um, two consecutive meetings and right, so we need to. I need to draft up option number three.
Okay.
And you'll present it in October and you'll vote in November.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. At least we're clear on, on what, what the, the will of the council is.
And whatever I can do to make your life more complicated, I'll be.
Well, that's, that's, and and whatever we can do to term well, we'll at you that you're not.
Rick, will that then take two more council meetings?
Yes, because it's a charter change.
Sorry, I did not realize that we couldn't amend those. Uh, okay, uh, next one is the services process on special use. Blah, blah, who's talking to us about that one? Is that Robbie?
I can talk about it. It's, it's just a requirement of the State Zoning Procedures Act. It used to be the cat and mouse game whenever there was an unhappy person who was turned down for rezoning. Who do you serve? How do you get all the council members served, et cetera, et cetera? Well, legislature finally stepped up and did the right thing. So I, come on, cities and counties. Appoint somebody who will be uh au- authorized to accept service. So that's, and so now they're requiring that. And so my suggestion was let it be your city manager. That's the simplest person to serve.
As long as it's not the mayor, I'm happy with that. All right, uh, next was the thing that we had talked about uh with the whole business license issue relating to events and whatnot, Dana.
Um, yes, so this uh ordinance would change um the business license ordinance. Currently. There's no exemption for hobby type businesses, you know, people that, you know, might do artwork, that's. You know, might do artwork, that sort of thing, craft sales, um. Under our current ordinance, they would be required or are required to get a business license. This, um, puts a cutoff of anybody making, um. Less than twenty five hundred dollars per year will not be required to get a business license.
And we had talked about this in previous meetings. Everybody's good with that. Yes. All right. Next up is, uh, the public works building. Is that Darrell or Robbie talking about?
Have to breathe. I'm reinitialized.
I just kind of.
No, for sure. I mean, I can't even tell the people on Zoom what's going on because I'm dead, right? I just, I just need to blame you live. That's all. My, mine does not appear to be.
Working. Yeah, the sound's not working. That gives me a second turn to the page.
Pardon us if anybody's actually online. The city manager tripped over the. Power lines and. The whole grid of Chatty Hills shut down momentarily.
But I'm okay. Now, this is a public works, uh, building a long time coming. We put a R F P out for that. I don't know why, but public works got tired of working in a tent that, you know, rain came in and they were soaking wet and. For whatever reason, they wanted the building. But now we appreciate the mayor and council, uh, allowing us to keep this in the budget for last couple of years. Uh, we were waiting for the right time. Rico crossroads discussion was taken on, so we wanted to make sure we got through that. But we, you know, anything over a hundred thousand dollars for a public worst project has to be put out for bid for thirty days. So we did that. And we've got several bids. We, we had a bit opening in here and I think we had what six at least. Um, so a lot of, a lot of folks had a lot of, we had pre-conference, a bid pre-conference and they all came out. Uh, it was, uh, we had, we had one bid. It was like close to a million. And the other bids were a little bit more in the line around four to five hundred thousand dollars, but. Um, the, we want to recommend awarding the bid to, uh, D C W construction. They're the lowest, most responsive bidder. For a four hundred nineteen thousand dollars, two hundred, four hundred nineteen, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, to them. And I wanted to put in there, this is for a sixty by, and I'm taking all Daryl's thunder, sorry. But a sixty by a hundred, uh, building, he knows more about it. He's the one that helped and he got the specs for it and, and knows exactly what they're getting. Um, and I'll go ahead and say that to save money, by the way, y'all know Daryl. Uh, he, they're going to take, do the clearing and the grading and probably site prep and everything like that. So that cut costs down already for this. So. He was able to get the low cost. We initially budgeted for about three fifty in a pole barn for one fifty. That was pre. Covid and all that prices went up. So when we did the bid, we, we only bid. For the public works building. We didn't do the pole barn on purpose because we knew that prices were going to go up. We're going to do R F P for the pole barn separately. Um, but in here also included a contingency. Cause you're going to hear tonight, we're going to talk about a change order, if you will, for T S Bost because. You know, we went back materials a little bit more that we're going to need in that regard. So to avoid that. We're just putting in there, get you approval fifteen percent contingency in case when it goes out. We're anticipating that, but in case it goes over a little bit. We don't have to come back to council and say, hey, it's over because this material was a little bit more, this material was a little bit more.
What material are we talking about, Robbie?
Let me get Daryl jump up here and tell you.
Or sixty by hundred piece of.
No, 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 that was, that was. Yeah, four hundred and twenty. That's for the building. He's talking about T S blocks, the next, the next.
Yeah, I'm talking about, cause I said the.
Daryl, is it, is it prefab or what is, tell, tell us about the building?
Yeah, the buil- the build is still structure building on a concrete slab. It's one hundred deep, sixty wide. Uh, approach slab front and back slab in the back for your air compressors, all that with a cover. A small office inside, small restroom inside, spotlights on outside, motion, motion detect, uh, censored. Um, there's a little bit like we said, a little bit of contingency. If something happens, we miss something. You know, we had all this drawn up, you know, when you build, you do stuff, there's always, uh, we need an extra outlet here. Or we, we need to move the one hundred outbreakers from here to here. It's not going to line up right. That, that's pretty much what, what Robbie's talking about.
This is a fixed price bid from them though, right? We're not like absorbing steel prices.
That's right. I just paid.
Right.
My driveway, which is a little bit more than one and a half times the amount of concrete that that building will have. Fourteen thousand dollars. How in the world are we at? Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a sixty by one hundred building.
We had.
We did this when we did the signs and I remember we put it back out and it came back sixty thousand cheap.
And we had several, we had, he'll, he'll show you that we got.
Yeah, we got, we got one at four nineteen, one at four forty-one, one at four forty-five, one at five ninety-six. And the not winner was nine ninety-eight. Um, I won't say the names of who those were, but.
But that tells me we need to talk to other people because that's about. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars too high.
Well, I mean, well, the bid went out on the Georgia Public Registry to the entire state.
Those buildings on the internet and brought to you and hire people and get it up for sixty grand.
Yeah.
Come in with your concrete.
I mean, this.
I mean, I'm not being a jerk. I'm just saying that's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's for a steel building. With some steel, that's, that's ludicrous.
It's not just a building. You got, we got the lighting on inside. I mean, you know.
Smaller than that. I know what this stuff costs.
Right.
And it's not four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So.
And if it is, you're shopping at the wrong place.
Daryl, is it about the size of the Providence Fellowship Building? I'm trying to get some kind of, soon as size.
No, that Providence is probably four times.
Greg, it's about that same size. And I want to remember, that's been a long time ago. That one, they're in the three hundred thousand dollar range for that building.
You're trying to say it's as big as Providence.
So to give you some scale of size.
It's going to have reinforced concrete in the middle too, because future for lift in case, you know, they're going to work on vehicles. You know, ideally down the road and Daryl's got this proposal. We want to talk to you about it maybe in a retreat or, or next budget season that. You know, uh, the police department has a lot of routine maintenance on their vehicles, oil change and stuff like that. They work on tractors, bushhogs, their vehicle stuff. They can do it in here instead of farming it out. Uh, hire an in-house mechanic. And then you have an in-house mechanic that does all that and will, it, there's, it could be a cost saving today. We got to do the cost benefit analysis, but. You know, they're, they're building it out for that. Plus you got the restroom. They're going to have a, um, some storage above the officers, an office. Um, can be H V A C in the office, uh, for the public works crew in the restroom. Mentioned restroom, that kind of stuff. So.
Roll up doors. Uh, so there's a lot more than just a build. I mean, it's, I know, I, I said what you're saying.
The pole barns will be different though, like you're talking.
But like, right, Robbie was talking about, I've been, I've met with several fuel companies and vendors and I'm trying and. Um, Greg and I and the Google been talking about trying to do things in house, save money. By the time you take two officers to drive a car over, they get the oil changed while they. Have, have a mechanic come here. We'll talk more about it, but I've done a, so you know, I've done a lot of research. Like we did before, start doing stuff in-house, which that's why we save so much money in my department. Trying to break it down. We save even more money by doing what we're doing. This bill is going to be able to serve all of the fleets. Uh, and it's like I said, it's a six, we're doing a six inch. Slab and in the center, we're going to do an eight inch slab for a lift in the future. Of course, we don't have the money. We didn't budget for that. So, but. We want to be ready for all that. So.
But Daryl's just engineer drawings.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, like, like Robbie said, we had several, we had several pre-meetings. Uh, they come out, walk the spot, spot, then ask a lot of questions. So we, there's a lot of extra we had to put into it. So. The, the builders, people that was doing the, the bidding on this, they definitely had a, a lot of information to go by.
Good.
It was, wasn't a, wasn't done easily.
What other business have we done with D S D?
Sir.
What other business have we done?
Done a lot of business with them.
They the paid companies too.
No, they, uh, if you, the, the new, the power that we've done out here, uh, for the vents. They've done it. They're the one that did the, uh, all the remote modeling in, in city hall that we did. Uh, they've done some other projects fencing. They're the one that did the fencing around here. They've done pretty good many projects for the city. So they. They have investment and the reason they come in so, so cheap, when I talk to them, the overhead is less. They work out of a, a house. They use an office and a room. So that's why they. Come in so much cheaper.
Doubt you need a building. I've been pushing for a building for years.
Yes, sir.
I just don't see four hundred thousand dollars there. Sorry.
Yeah, we budget, I think we budget from five, we have from five at the beginning.
No, I mean, the key, the key, I mean, I get where Richie's coming from, right? You see he adds. A hundred thousand dollar shell. Doors, it's the, you know, I mean, all the stuff that.
Yeah, then, and we, like Robbie said, doing the grading in house, that saved us pretty good money because we're going to be. All of the, the dirt that we brought from the river when we built the boat ramp, we're going to be using it for, for, for the base. And the millions that we use is going to be around the area. So there's a lot of money we.
Inches everywhere.
Sir. Uh, six, 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 six around, of, of course, the perimeter and four inches in the center was the eight inches in the center where the list will be. And so, yeah. So it'll be, it'll, it'll be there for hopefully many years ago.
All right. Thanks, Daryl.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And then Robbie, you're going to talk about the T S blocks.
Yeah, and Darrell's here with me too to back me up on that. This is, uh, what I kind of mentioned earlier. Uh, you know, our, our engineers with, uh, Kekonwood and, and Wayne works with Kekonwood now, came back out, did some more. Analysis of the roads and so we don't get down further. There's, um, additional, we initially budgeted or we, you awarded, American council ordered one million. Uh, twelve, three forty. For that T S Bost project and we're estimating, you know, further review, there's revised quantities about a hundred twenty-five, almost a hundred twenty-six. Square yard of chip seal micro-surfacing, which is what we're doing. So it's a little increase in the chip seal micro-surfacing to the tune of, uh. About two hundred and one thousand dollars. So, uh, we're asking that you, you. Approve additional two hundred and one thousand dollars going forward. So we can continue this project. That's phase one. Of the T S Bost. Right now, phase two of the T S Bost is going to be the Rico road portion. That's out for bid right now. September twenty-first is a bid opening for that. And that's going to be the Rico road component that requires full depth. Of course, I'm, we're not talking about that now, but I just wanted to at least brief you. So you weren't surprised. Uh, when we come to you on next month with the phase two. So we're working through you. This is what we promised. This is going to be the biggest. Road project the city's done in its existence, uh, for this particular. T S Bost project. There's phase one and phase two, but it's, it's all one T S Bost project, but we broke it up in phases because you got micro-surfacing. And then you got full depth reclamation and such. So.
I get this is going to be one of the biggest project we've done for less amount. It will cover a lot of lay miles. From what we've done in the past by new, right? We still renew, research with new products that everybody else has been using. For twenty years.
It's right. You may have seen, um, Hutchery Road. They've been clearing the way in order to get that micro-surfacing project going.
Is that why they did?
Yes, yes, sir. They're clipping the shoulders because, you know. They'll pave over, you know, squirrels and armadillos, but they're not going to pave over the grass. I'm just kidding. I see that on YouTube and stuff. They do that in Alabama.
Robbie, you said we're four, we're four lining, uh, Hutcherson.
Yeah, we're going to. We're going to four lanes, Hutchison. We got a median going down the middle. Straight trees. But now that's, we, we just asking for, um, just to, uh, prove tonight when, during the council made two hundred one thousand dollar increase. Uh, because it's, there's more materials in our micro-surfacing.
I bet you I get two emails about that before I get home.
We got them now.
No, I mean, you know, to be clear too, like all this, the micro-surfacing work that we're doing is going to give us. A good number of years on those roads again, but it's not repaving in the way that, you know, people are thinking. Uh, because we really still don't have enough money to do the repaving we need to be doing. Rico roads in bad enough shape, that's the only way we can do it. But, but you know, it's, it's, we're, we're trying to extend the life as long as we can until revenues catch up.
All this doing, this, all this doing is topping all the hardware we've done. The bottom, now it's time that we've all planned for, for last seven years since I've been here.
This will be a close to, when we put phase one and phase two together, it's going to be close to a three million dollar T S Bost project this year.
When they expand, they're spending on getting started.
The, the phase one is they're starting right now. They're, they're getting roads clipped and they're going to start.
Materials.
Yeah, they're staging materials back here.
Yeah, so.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir.
Uh, who's talking about the Douglas County I G A? Is that Rick or is that you, Robbie? Or is that you? The goo.
Did we ever find out who left the. Okay.
Feel like people were taking that.
It's right now.
Left aside on Campbellton Redbine Road.
Oh, yeah. I, I saw that too. I have no idea.
Is it still there or did it get absorbed by the community?
Okay, when I came, when I came here today, I, I mean, I could use it. You saw it. Uh, yeah. So this is just a renewal agreement with Douglas County. To use their jail services. Um, we're currently, we take, uh, we only take our misdemeanors there. And, uh, just like with anything else, the, uh. Cost has gone up, so they increased their costs as well to sixty dollars per person per day. Um, I can tell you this, that Judge Ross does not allow someone to stay more than three days. At their jail. So it's never more than a hundred and eighty dollars per person, which he then tacks on when they come to court as a fine. So it's a net neutral for the city. We eventually get our money back. And the, the amount of time that it takes for an officer to go from here to Douglas County is way better than from here to Rice Street. And right now, Rice Street, um, Fulton County isn't going to take a misdemeanor arrest anyway. So. Right. Plus they're, they got their own problems going on right now.
Are you, you're talking about the bonds and fine thing too?
I mean, I can, uh, unless we're, you know. That's, I mean, that's part of the agreement that we will increase. Was it ten dollars and ten percent or whatever? Ten percent, yeah. That's.
Every ticket basically, and that passes through to Douglas County to help support this program.
Right.
Cost neutral less because it just gets added on to the tickets.
And again, the amount of time that an officer is away from the city is way less going to Douglas County than it is all the way down to, to Rice Street. So.
We don't have to jail people.
Again, nobody. Anybody have any questions about this or? I feel a question forming on Troy's lips right now.
No, not that, not that particular subject is, uh, was thinking about the employment situation where we. Fully staffed or?
Uh, well, I, I was going to talk about that during my, my presentation. But, um. Y-yeah, I did have an officer leave. He went to the Fulton County D A's office. However, I took their chief investigator. Who is now our detective. He starts on Mondays.
So how does Miss Willis feel about that?
I, she'll get over it. So, um, but yeah, we did. So I do have. Um, and then we, last month I, I said we were, we had some people in background. They didn't pass our background. So I had to reopen the, um, job posting. I have eleven applicants right now. That came in. So we're piling them and hopefully we'll be right back to fully staffed. So, but yeah. Any question?
While we've got the chief here and we have anything else? It's not Robbie's position, position control, something you're talking about?
Government birds, vision control. What is that? What is position control? Well, it controls me from just. Hiring any position I want at any rate I want, you know? So, hey, I want. A new position. I'm just going to create it and create the salary. Well, you guys govern that position control and, you know, we haven't, we haven't updated in a few years. Uh, we, we set the, uh, the top rate. Um, pretty low. A few years ago, the maximum. So you can hire, and obviously we don't hire people at the maximum, but. After years of service, they reached that maximum. And technically if somebody reaches that maximum and they get an increase, a cola merit increase, something like that. You can't pay him past that maximum because you haven't approved it. So we have to just write them a check. Here's what you would have made for the year because you're already at the maximum. Well, we got to fix that. Um, so that's what this is doing. Um, it's doing that and it's doing a couple of other things because we want to create, I can't, again, I said, I can't create a new position if I want to. We don't have, um, Daryl is increasingly taking on a lot of, uh, project oversight stuff. In the city, as you may have noticed. And so he's been trying to pass along some of the public works. Related duties, uh, maintenance and stuff to his, uh, assistant, if you will, but. He's just a public work supervisor. Um, but we want to have him cre- create a double, a deputy public works director. Position. So we want to put that in there. Not saying that someone's going to get it, but you know, they have to earn it, but it's there if we need it. Same thing with, um, the fire department. We have Chief Brett. Um, Chief Brett's our only chief. We got a battalion chief right next to him. We don't have a deputy chief, you know, and, and. What happens if Greg says, I'm going to retire and I'm going to move to a beach somewhere in Tahiti. what happens if Greg says, I'm gonna retire and I'm gonna move to a beach somewhere in Tahiti and operate a tiki hut and sell coconuts? Well, we gotta, we need somebody, a deputy fire chief, right? So that's another position I put in there, a deputy fire chief. Uh, and then the the third one I put in what we've been talking about is an economic development director. There's a coordinator in there. That's not the same thing. So an economic development director position because of uh, projects that we have going on. But this will be a planner centered position. In other words, when we hire an economic development director, they'll be part of community development department. But with also have a planner designation so that way they can help with reviewing plans and such, because I've talked about that before and I've got a couple folks back here to know a little bit about development in the city. And you know that, I mean, our police respond to a lot of calls or fire respond to a lot of calls. But why are they doing that? Why are they responding to calls? Why are they, why are they providing these services? It's because there's residential structures and people living out there. Well, who do you think reviews all the plans for all that development to come in? You know, these two people are here. Two. Okay, so we need to beef up our community development department and that's what that will, that will do. So part of position control is adding those three positions, if you will, not people, but positions that will be able, people may already be here to do that job. And then, of course, increasing those those maximums. So we're not, people aren't topped out. And that's consistent. I reviewed what we did recently with this year's cola and made sure that nobody would be topped out with those maxims. And that's where we are today.
It's also consistent then with the budget going forward so that our position controls align and what we're planning doing the budget.
Yes.
Positionalize and all that. And and it's important those things are all lined up.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions about that? Uh, that's it for the agenda review. We've got several other items to talk about. Uh, you know, we've had this kind of ongoing conversation about impact fees and getting somebody out here to talk to us about impact fees. I spent about six weeks going through Department of Community Affairs, um the Georgia Municipal Association and A R C, trying to figure out who in the region is the best person to talk to us about that. And what's interesting is there are a lot of people that touch them, but there aren't very many people that want to claim expertise in the subject. And the name that kept coming up was a guy named Chris Nelson, who's actually the guy that wrote the Georgia uh, impact fee law several years ago. And who is the guy who is now also the expert witness every time some city gets sued because somebody doesn't like their impact fee law. And he actually just retired from Georgia Tech about a year ago. He was uh the a planning professor or whatever at Georgia Tech and this is his area of expertise. Anyway, long story short, uh, he and I finally connected because he was on vacation somewhere. I was on vacation. He is thrilled at the idea of coming out here to walk us through uh, what that looks like. He he knows Chattahoochee Hills. He knows what's happening here, thinks it's really cool and wants to be supportive. Uh, so we're working on schedule with him. We'll get him in what looks like probably November uh, council meeting uh, for a work session um, or somewhere around that council meeting, maybe, maybe not that day for a a couple hours, three, four hours, whatever we need for him to give us background, to walk through all the things that we're currently doing and answer any questions anybody has, talk about the positives and minuses and all, all of that stuff. Uh, it'll cost us a couple grand to get him out here because he lives in Arizona now. Uh, and you know, a couple of days with the staying and all that kind of stuff, but but.
If only we had a hotel. Sorry.
Actually, uh, our local hotel is graciously offered to host him at the hotel to help reduce the cost. But I I I do and and I'll say I I immediately called him and said, hey, would you mind hosting this guy to reduce the cost? And he quickly said, yes. Anyway, long story short, I just wanted to update everybody because I know that's been a conversation we've had again and again. And I've got the best person to have that conversation with us in the country because he knows our uh coming, coming to have that conversation with us. Um, so just that was the update on that. We had had a a conversation about uh solid wastes and Robbie has done a good bit of work to follow up on that. We have something to talk about there.
Back again. Hey, you're a counsel. Well, just like before, we talked about bidding. We uh, we use the Georgia procurement registry. We put out for bid uh, a solid waste bid. And we put in there that this, you know, this is an exclusive contract. That's the only way you would get somebody to actually bid on it. Uh, we weren't sure we'd get anybody to bid on it, but we did get one bid. Uh, Am Waste was the only company, not any current company in G F L or Republic or uh, reliable or any other services in the area bid on it. Uh, advanced disposal. This is Am Waste, which I didn't really hear of before. I wasn't familiar with Am Waste. But they bid on it. Um, the only bidders that we had. So we put on the work session because I didn't want to put this before you for a vote because I think you need to mull it over because what this does is it's twenty eight dollars and some change for an eighty gallon container that would be provided and it's a weekly pickup and you pay, it would be quarterly. Um, that would be us billing, not them billing. So we would have to come up with a billing system. And it's an exclusive contract with the exception of private areas. So Rico Lake, Saranby, any other place that comes in and have private streets, we we wouldn't service those. Yeah, they got their own H O A, their own dumpster, those kind of things, which is majority of the city, but it means whatever you have now would have to discontinue and you'd have to go to this one and then you'd have no, you have no choice. You have to use this particular service whether you like it or not. So um, that's.
What's the charge? Twenty eight?
It's twenty eight um, a month. So it ends up being a little one can. It's like eighty something. A lot of people pay a quarter. It ends up being a little over eighty dollars a quarter. So.
I get two cans from G F L for about a hundred and ten quarter.
Hundred and ten quarter. That's two. They they've offered two additional eight dollars for another one.
That's the same.
So.
He is, I mean, the key is the only way it works is if you tell the key is, the only way it works is if you tell everybody in the city who is happy with their current provider that they can't use them anymore and you're gonna use these folks instead. Now, you know, the the benefit is there are a couple of people in the community that had a hard time getting service, right? And continue to have a hard time getting service. One of the things that a single source provider would do is guarantee to cover every single person. But again, there's no optionality around it. And I I don't know. I don't know.
I've never had a problem with G F L. They pick up my trash.
Yeah.
I let him turn around on my car.
So, yeah, I I've had problems with G F L. They just quit. And you know, when they went to the big trucks, they uh, had problems on some of the dead end gravel roads, minus one. And I feel the panic of residents who have been without trash. And I just learned today that there's still a resident in my district that's been without trash pickup for a month because of the ooh, ha, ha, we're not canceling. You're in South City of South Fulton thing.
Right.
Um, but I'm really nervous that only one company answered your R F P because if this company doesn't work out and we cancel everybody's service, those mom and pop providers are likely not gonna want to come back. I'd really like to hear your option be about providing a convenience center. I think that's something we could we could use for more than the residents that need it. I know.
Yeah, I have to, I may have to pull somebody up that has experience with that. I mean, Darrell, I don't want to put him on the spot, but he has experience with working around and near convenience centers and that'd be something that, you know, the council would have to think long and hard about doing. Um, they're.
Darrell, come on up. I'd like to get your opinion on that because I know you have.
And Mike Darrell, part time.
Put him on the spot.
Well, if he was, that's my profession, professional opinion, I would steer as far away as I can from a convenience center. You're, it's a lots, a lots of lots of upkeep. I have one at the end of my road. It's been there for years. I helped build it when I worked Carroll County. It is fenced in. There is someone that works there all the time. When it's open, the days it's open, but it's a wreck.
Did they went on by Post Road?
No, this, I live in Bound Junction.
Okay.
Okay. And it's fenced in. There's a house. There's a restroom inside there. They have separate units for glass and paperware, whatever. But people, they got cameras up and getting the right camera to to enforce is hard. People come during Christmas time, holidays, they just push the trash all around it. The wind blows, it's all over into the neighbors' rest, into the neighbors. There's several in Carroll County. If you want to look at one, if you go Bankhead Highway, which you go towards Carrollton uh, on the right, uh, I think they're in the road, pass a cell barn on the right, dire road. There's a convenience center there. The lady that lives behind is a friend of mine's mother. She raises cane with this county every week because all the trash blows over in her yard when you get a windstorm. Uh, the the trucks, when, just like G F L, when they break down and the trucks can't come in or whatever, we have the same issue with ours. Uh, I have roll off back here and I call, I need it changed out. Sometimes it takes them a month to get around. So then we have it stacked all around.
Crazy.
And it and it's hard because you, today's workforce isn't, wasn't what it was just ten, five years ago. C D L drivers. Uh, it's it's a lot. It's a lot to, you'd have to hire somebody to work there every time, even and even if you adjusted the days. It's like the park ranger that we hard to find someone in there. And then if you don't hire someone for that right there, you you still have to open it. You can't just say, no, we're not gonna do it this week because I have somebody. It's a lot, a lot.
Were you here? We we did that. What was it? We we got a couple of cans in. It's been eight, nine, ten years ago and it was, it was very quick and and we got.
One time, yeah, one time you got out of that because it was, because and just like you said, e- even if you put signs up, but we have it ours. You pull up and there's a man that monitor. You have to have a Fort, uh, Carroll County tag. And they bring stuff that like refrigerated stuff, refrigerators and stuff with it, with air compressors and stuff and you, they will not take it. Then they throw it out on the ground and they leave and then you get the police involved and who it is. It's a lot. Believe me, it's a lot.
It's easier just drive to dump.
Yeah, that's the way, that's what I do. I I go to the dump. I don't even go there. I go to the dump and it's I don't have trash. I I live rural too. I don't, we don't have a trash pickup.
Darrell, we we need to come up with another option if that's, so so a couple of convenience centers. I've been to the one uh, in Carroll County. It's Douglas County, actually, right off Post Road.
Correct.
Uh, going towards Carrollton. And I think that's a thing of beauty. It's maybe a couple of acres fenced in. They got the guy there. It's only, you know, I've never seen it. It's so, it's probably situational. And then that other one downtown, right before the stadium called Charm. And it's a whole operation where they have all the recycling stations and it's it's really odd because it's right in a residential area, but it seems like everyone and their son loves charm. I think a couple of people have used that. But the thing of it is though, we have a need here in the community and it's a small need, but it's a quality of life need, you know? And especially when you have seniors, I mean, when when they stop picking up on my road, I was gonna offer to pick up trash for some, I'm a senior, but at least my back is not out, you know? We have to come up with something. If that's not a solution, we need smarter people in the room to help the smarter people in the room come up with something. It can't just be, we don't provide services and it's just affecting a couple of people. Y'all figure it out.
Yeah.
That's just me.
You gotta get the big bit. Yeah, that's right.
I don't think the proposal is the solution to require.
Change our laws to three people gripe.
If it was you, if you were one of the three people, Richie, you'd be on there.
I live in the woods. I'd be burning in a hole.
Hey, Robbie, I thought I was gonna get it, it was zero or at least three proposals.
Yeah.
You don't even have.
I saw the R S P, you know, and and looked into some pricing and stuff and you only got one that came back.
Yeah.
Came back, I know. Uh, but I I got to comparing prices and I called some people in the community in my district and even other districts. And we're gonna have a problem along the lines that a lot of the seniors are getting discounts.
Right.
Right now. And and their quarterly price is around fifty dollars per quart. And they do have an extra can with that for like, so what we're gonna be doing, if we do go this route, is we're gonna be, they're gonna be paying about a hundred dollars more a year, a hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Be pissed off a couple of hours versus a couple of people need to run.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, I don't know what to do about it, but uh.
Yeah, I talked to him about that. Like, do you have a backdoor service too for those that can't bring it? We got long driveways in Chattahoochee Hills.
Right, exactly. We talked about that.
So I see people coming with their golf carts, holding it behind them or something, you know, getting that. It's, you just have to get it to the end of the driveway. So.
Or if another option we could look into is is finding a prop provider, maybe this is it, or maybe it's it's pole. I don't know how you say the polar. Is that?
I'm sorry.
Was that other provider, Polar or Polar? Anyway. Pollard, okay. They, they can offer uh, sort of like a neighborhood dumpster. So they got one on right off Garrett's Ferry Road. Three or four neighbors go in, they can't get service and they, you know, it, I don't know. I mean, if if I've got to be the one to do the research on that, I can do that, but that might be an option other than having seniors go to the dump or burn their trash. I'd say I wouldn't burn my trash. When I was faced with burning my trash, it was either gonna be my husband or we're gonna move. I'm not, you know, at this point in my life, I'm not burning trash, but.
Well, just throw your hairspray down.
That'll work. Yeah.
Don't do it.
Don't do it.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's it's a tough topic. I get it. I mean, and we try, we try.
But again, the idea of of to me, the thing that we could be trying to help people do is what Lori just said, like trying to help and figure out, okay, so three of you having a problem. Which one of you can get the dumpster?
Yep.
And, you know. Help them figure out a way to help themselves without creating a situation where the whole city's supporting something.
That doesn't need to, right?
Yeah.
No one in the, in the city can say you didn't drive.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good idea though. I mean, you talked to me about it before. If like some residents got together and they grouped together and said, let's chip in on a dumpster and, you know, one person is obviously gonna be making a payment. It's gonna be an honor system if somebody else doesn't pay. But and then you also have to make sure that, oh, somebody finds that dumpster and then it's a free for all, but it's a private thing. It's on, it's on you. And as long as it's not in a right of way or impacting any kind of public service.
I think that's the answer.
Well, you know, Malse, Malse Trimble used to call herself the trash queen. I guess I've got that um, title now. So I'll do some more research and see if I can find some of those people. A roll away. Small roll offs. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you for trying.
No, yeah, we had to try. You don't know if you don't ask, right?
Roll off with household trash be kind of dangerous.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need definitely close dump.
Three yard things with a door that closes.
All right. So so any, I mean, I do think though that that is the best.
You know, chain like that's a pocket. Yeah.
Next to somebody's house. People don't come up to next to your house. Do it at the end of your driveway. Don't come to your yard. All right. Uh, Macedonia Church Cemetery, Lori.
Okay, so, um. Yeah. Couple more this spring, the rest of the. Coming down.
It's on the side of the road, it's south.
So Macedonia Church Cemetery is an abandoned cemetery southeast Caps Ferry Road. Uh, um, south of the parkway, um, on the west, east side of Campbellton Redwine Road. At Caps Ferry. I'm not saying that very well. Okay. East side of Campbellton Redwine Road, about point three miles south of Caps Ferry. At one point, it was the the original family that owned the property was the Walker family. Probably in the thirties, forties and fifties. Uh, and there was a a church there, Macedonia Methodist Church. Um, a school and a lodge and cemetery across the street. And uh, it's, it got a significant history, in my opinion, because it was African American and we're, a couple of us are collecting history on the African American community here. They contacted the old Camel County Historical Society asking for their help to see if there was any way they could recommend a a help preserve that cemetery and get access to it. Um, Lila Rhine, who's on our our historic commission is a, is a member of the that historic society. So we got together with the family. We hosted a meeting here, learned uh, what they wanted to do. Um, they've been maintaining it for years, not, some of them were under the impression the family still owned the property. Uh, that's not true. Someone else actually owns the property. So we helped them to find the property records for that. And by the way, I searched back early enough and found that there was an easement to the cemetery when on an earlier property record, when it was sold from the family to the next owner. I don't know if those easements pass over as a property, so.
Should.
Should. So that's up to them to find that out. But when we were talking about different options for um, protecting that area, um, because it's, it's, it's in a prime location where there's land around and it could be developed. One of the things we told them was that um, in a similar situation on Cochran Mill Road, a property owner donated the property to the city. The city accepted it with the terms that they wouldn't be responsible for its maintenance. And I said, I could, I'd be willing to ask the city if they would accept that donation um, as a first step, then they could contact the property owner to see if they would be interested in doing that. It's only on, it's less, it's on less than two and a half acres. Not really sure how large the cemetery is. Not really sure how large the cemetery is. You can see maybe thirty grave sites. It could extend further back. But honestly, the property itself is not large enough probably to support a house with the cemetery there. So that may be something that the property owner is willing to do on to take a, a tax write off. If not, at least they can make contact with them and see if they're, uh, could have an arrangement to continue visiting or cleaning up the cemetery. What they asked me to ask the council is if, if uh. Would the city. Would the city be in a position to accept this as, as a gift from the property owner, if they could work that out with the property owner? And then they would also be interested in, in having some kind of agreement with the city where they could, they would maintain the cemetery. They have a really strong interest in it as a family. I think there were seventeen family members that came to that meeting. So that's the ask. I show you on the little handout where the cemetery is. You've probably driven by it a gazillion times. Just wanted to get.
Particularly in the case where they're willing to maintain it.
Sounds good to me. So do we just ask for a head nod from everyone?
We need to accept the donation officially when that happens.
That it's okay to tell them they can.
That's great. We took care of a new one.
You got a head nut? Okay. So I'll, I'll let them know. We've got head nuts. It was a two hu- two point four three acres. It's just a little sliver. The rest of it is still owned on the other side, but it was originally a square. So Campbellton Redwine cuts off the little sliver there.
So all of it has graves on it?
We, I would say maybe a half acre or less than an acre has the graves on it. Thank you.
Next up Charter School Traffic, Robbie.
Oh Lord, what's going on at the old charter school? Who's already tore up now?
I got my backup.
The goo, you still taking in those, those parents up there upsetting them? Is that what you're doing?
We have, well, there was some discussion, um, earlier. I know that, uh, council member Foster was. Seeking some input on, um, some, some remedies for traffic in that area, uh, speeding. And such and been working with the school district, Mike Looney, who's the superintendent and Warren Francesco, who's with operations and. Patrick Muhammad, of course, who's the principal there, uh, to get some, a blinking light, the slow traffic down there, um, at the school's expense. So we talked about that. Um, and then, um, and, and Chief Degoo, when he was in his executive, uh, chief. Training stuff, calling it the wrong thing, but uh, he learned a lot, uh, from other vendors and such. And he's got something he's going to share with you. I think that you may want to look into as well that might help, uh, at no cost. So we're just trying to address, uh, the, the speeding and such. Uh, as, as Chief Brett knows, uh, all the intersections on South Fulton Parkway, because there's not, they're not signalized. They're all dangerous. And Rivertown is especially dangerous because it has a lot more traffic, school traffic, morning and afternoon and such. So, uh, and then, you know, we need to see what we can do to address it on our end because we have no control over South Fulton Parkway, which is a state route.
But there is a ongoing conversation. Everybody's helping with that conversation. Our local, uh, state representative and senator involved in the conversation. You know, all of, all of, uh, those intersections are programmed. Roundabouts are the safest way to get those high street, high speed traffic streams at the rate of those low speed traffic streams. And.
And I brought that email stream in, the mayor's talking about it, people in his email stream, just so you know what he's saying. You got Mike Looney, Patrick Muhammad. Uh, Francisco, uh, Warren, Camilla, you have council members, Clay Smith, uh, Noel, Noel Malouf. Um, going down the list. We've got Sam Suriel with Kekinwood. Uh, you got Mandisha Thomas, a rep. Mayor is there, of course, uh, Sharon Shubidan, who's the, uh, city manager of South Fulton for now. And you've got all these, she's under contract. Uh, so Donzella James, State Senate, Paul Denard. G Dot, you guys know him. So that's the kind of grouping that's in this email chain. I've got multiple emails. They're all working on this. But the goo's got some cool information he wants to share.
So while I was at the chief's executive, there's a company out there called Blue Line Solutions. Who self, City South Fulton works with and Farron works with. And they will come in and they will do a traffic study at no cost to the city. Then if they determine that based on that traffic study that we have an issue with traffic in the school zone, they will come in with their equipment. With all the, there, there's no cost to the city. Their equipment, they will maintain it. They will, they will, uh, put it up. Whatever. And it's a profit sharing. So.
For camera.
Yeah. It's, um, profit sharing sixty for the city, thirty for the company. And then, and then. If they determine that we don't meet the needs for it, we can still use them, but they flip it. They get sixty percent and we get forty or thirty five with sixty five, thirty five, whatever it is.
How bad is the speed? Nothing. I see the cars still piling up in the road and I see.
I, I understand.
Doing what he can. I see him doing what he can.
Sure. And you know, some of the speeds that we get in the school zone are fifty miles an hour. You know, so I mean, the speeding is there and that's what the traffic study will do. It will actually count how many speeders, how many violations are there. And, and it's a one week study that they do.
And we would do that before we made any decision.
Correct, of course. And of course, it's no cost to the city. Um, I did, I did reach out to, uh, this is the only copy of the book that I have. I did reach out to Ryan and he's sending me. Um, eight copies of this that we can put in, in the council packets for next. Uh, Tennessee, I think is their headquarters, but they have, uh, all over Georgia, they.
Would you have to know where they're the ones working with City of South Fulton?
I'm sorry.
Are they the ones working with City of South Fulton?
So if we ask them to do the traffic study, we're not under any further obligation. Well, that's a no brainer. We need to have that. And, and isn't, isn't G Dot asking for a traffic study anyway for our sign?
Yeah, and they will only do the traffic study in the school zone. They won't do it all the way down Rivertown either direction. It'll just be in the school.
I, I, I think, I think doing the study is definitely worthwhile. I do know that there has been just a lot of trouble. With the one in, uh, City of South Fulton, with the ones at the schools there around timing. Right? Because theirs are all set up so that, you know, the speeds up and drops during school hours. And they're sending people tickets outside of those hours. And it's just like been a huge. Well, yeah, no. And I mean, I, I just, I've had conversations with a couple of people in City of South Fulton about that, just because they were complaining. Don't ever do, you know, and so I, I just want to be careful. Just want to be really careful.
Sure.
About how we. But, but starting with the study. To see how, what the scale of the problem actually is.
Sure.
This is a good, I mean, yeah, it's a no brainer. Why wouldn't you?
They will even provide, they will even provide, according to this proposal, they will provide all the signage. The only thing that I think they don't provide is the flash and, the flash and light sign, but they, they will, they provide the warning signs that have to be displayed. And that's Georgia law, five hundred feet within its reduction. They provide all those signage. Um, again, it's their equipment. They maintain it. If it, if it gets vandalized, it gets damaged or whatever. It's, it's their equipment. They take care of it.
And frankly, if it's not making enough revenue, they've solved the problem. That's okay too, if they pull it out, right? Like, I mean, it's a problem that you want to solve.
Yeah, sure.
So we should go ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's. Get the data, right?
I will, I'll reach out to Ryan tomorrow and tell him we want to do at least the traffic study.
That's part one of the three part problem I see. So it, it is really a, a small part is part. Part two is the first week of school. And I just feel obligated to bring it up because residents have asked me to bring it up where traffic is a hot mess. And it's a hot mess in every school. It's not just our charter school. But, um, I think it's a hot mess we can work on. I mean, when I was, when I was a kid back in the day. In Chicago, they gave the kids a little patrol belts and we helped people cross the road. I mean, we were allowed to do that in the seventh grade. I don't, I don't know. Can we have volunteer? The one time I just sat at Cochran Mill in Rivertown with a notepad, like I was taking notes. Everyone slow down and stop. And they said, what are you doing? What are you doing? I'm just taking notes, you know? And maybe that's all it takes for that first week of school is some other people to help your two people.
Sure. It's, it's not unreasonable. Unfortunately, in the state of Georgia, there's only three people that, three types of people that can direct traffic. And that's firefighters, police officers and school crossing guards. So.
What do you got to do to be a school crossing guard? You gotta go to school?
There is a, there is a course you have to take, but then I have to swear you in.
I want to put it on the calendar now for, so we know the next week of school and I'll.
I mean, I'm not opposed to the school crossing guards. The, 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 the other issue then would be obviously paying, then we'd have to create.
Money for that.
Or if the school is willing to, to, to employ them.
I think, I think there's a couple of things, right? We know, we should know what the first day of school is.
And just gear up.
We should probably have a conversation with Patrick. The week before that, just to see what they've changed, what the, what their strategies are. And maybe we should schedule a little bit of overtime that week ourselves. Not, not, we're not on a ticket writing campaign then, just on a helping direct traffic to get people through that first week. Without the, the train wreck that it always is, because it does calm down pretty quickly.
Within a week.
Right? But it's always the same thing. Shame on us for not getting ahead of it.
Sure.
I feel very confident that you will get ahead of that.
Absolutely.
So.
And, and one of the other things I know that was asking for, you know, um, whether South Fulton or someone kind of being that present. At that intersection in the morning time, cause people are doing turnaround, you know, give them a ticket. They're doing wrong. They get a ticket.
So, so my officers are at that intersection on both, both ends. Um, in fact, yesterday, uh, Officer Pearson wrote like three, three people blowing the stop sign. Um, I pulled someone over on my way in yesterday. For, for doing the same thing. I almost T-boned him.
Right.
And because he, he blew the stop sign, you know, and so I pulled him over and gave him a ticket.
Right.
Um, so yeah, I mean, they, they are in the, in the morning, however, uh, you know, as we go along. I, I wish I could have the officer sit there all day. I really do. But sometimes they get called away, you know? Last week, on my way in, I handled an accident that was at that intersection with Greg Brett and, and everybody. Because my detective or my lieutenant, yeah, my lieutenant was at another call. And then Officer Pearson had to go to another accident further down this, down the road. So, yeah, I get what you're saying and they are there.
Right.
They, they know from seven to nine, the morning officers are in the school zone.
And I saw some of them out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Intersections we have though that are the odd angles on South Fulton Parkway are really hard ones. And that's, that's where the conversation with G Dot is focused. Right? I mean, that really needs change in the road.
Tom, so that brings up the third point. So, um. Uh, Ruby and I attended a City of South Fulton Town Hall meeting for District Two. Just because they had the word South Fulton Parkway intersection. And we thought, huh, well, let's get all over that. What's that about? And it, it really was more focused on their District Two area, but they had. Some things came out of that meeting that apply to us all. And that is since the state gave, gave up ownership and municipalities have their own section. They're not working well together. And I get that you remember the South Fulton Parkway Alliance, whatever that is. But what that council member, um, suggested is that. There'd be more people from all of those cities sitting at the same table. And really, I guess it's one city in particular that's an offender. But you know, if the rest of the cities can, uh, encourage their cooperation. But things I hadn't even considered about, and, and I guess we're going to need to consider pretty soon. Is the MARTA buses going along South Fulton Parkway don't have a pull off, so they just kind of stop. And then the people taking the MARTA buses are right there on the parkway. I mean, you know, they're walking down the road. And there's, you know, a, some kind of another, uh, transportation place earmarked at Cochran Mill and South Fulton Parkway. And I would rather, uh, jump on this sooner than later. And Tom, maybe you can help establish those people at the table. So there's some kind of unified plan.
Well, I think they was going to pull together, um, some of the city leaders and stuff and have that start having that conversation. Because they have, it's so out of control.
It's so out of control. And it's going to be a hot mess for us.
What's interesting about that, and, and it's so, it's so emblematic of the City of South Fulton, right? Because there is a conversation that's going on.
Right.
Planning staff level and, and elected official level around that, you know, future plan. I mean, that's way down the road. Yes, the conversations are happening. The problem is that it's all G Dot Road.
Right.
And you know, the cities can make whatever plans they want, but the people that are actually going to do the work on the ground are G Dot. And G Dot is incredibly unresponsive.
The people at G Dot that were at that meeting were pretty responsive and, and we can get you those names.
We got their contact information.
I'm, I'm in meetings with those people. They're always responsive at the meeting. Oh yeah, we'll get right on that. And then when it comes down to actually spending money to do something, you always know.
Right.
Right? And, and I mean, that's been the case for twenty years. But yeah, I mean, it's. Thank you. All right. Uh, Ruby, you want to talk about the stage?
Okay. So I want to talk about the stage for the event, um, for Town Green. So for the last two years, three years, we've been having events out here. Um, Fulton County will let us have the stage if it's, um, it's available. Uh, and, and there's a couple of time we have had to, uh, rent states. So the cost of renting staging, taking money away from, um, our events. Has kind of like, you're talking about forty five thousand dollars sometime. So, yeah.
To rent the stage?
Yes. And so what we was thinking about, I had asked Dara to, um, Dara, you can come on up. But I had asked him to kind of, um, look around. The stage, okay. Some information on the stage that we.
Okay, uh, when we were out at our. House that we own now, you know, Rocky Reeves had that little small thing out there and y'all noticed it, what it would look like. And then so I was given a task to see what we could do to build one like that. So I met for two weeks, had contractors come about every other day. And so we designed a thirty foot wide, twenty foot deep wood size, because you know what? You don't want metal size because of band roofing, uh, outlets on the back, outlets on the front, if you have a band. Uh, pressure treated material, all of it stained, electrical run power, where I'm getting a, a average about forty five thousand dollars.
That seems almost in line with the little thing you were looking at at Rico Park. So I mean, I think this would have a, a bigger use.
And with us having to spend this kind of money every time, you know, if we have to get a stage, like right now, we don't know if we're going to get Fulton County stage for the fourteenth. If they don't have an event, we might, but we still have to use the resources that we have to spend on a stage. So compared to what we have.
And we could definitely use.
And so what, uh, what Ruby and Lauren and I talked about doing, if it's something that you want me to look forward to, because I've met. And I know about what it's going to be. I can draw it up again. Uh, I can, we can send it out. Uh, and get, and get some quotes, uh, because it's way above my spending limit. Uh, we can get some quotes and I can bring it to y'all and say, this is what it looks like. And I'm, I'm going to say. Fifty thousand dollars or less about, because that way if you, it's not including lights and fans up there, but it is all electrical work. So if we want to put fans and lights or whatever in it while it's there, and my recommendation, let's do it right one time. Get the stage that we want. And that way we don't have to add on to it, make it small, bigger or whatever.
The same size as this stage?
That's about. No, it's a little bigger than this, a little wider.
And it's deeper, right?
Yeah, that's probably twenty. I said a twenty by fifteen.
Would this stage go in your building?
No, what it's, what it's going to do, no, it's, it'll be set out. Uh, you know, the parking gravel area we have, where the bands play. Yeah, it's going to be right there and we're going to run power off that transformer, uh, run. And everything is done outside lighting. Uh, let's, let's, let's figure around fifty. So it gives me a comfortable number while I know when I'm trying to budget with these.
Thirty foot by what?
It's going to be thirty foot by twenty foot deep. Uh, twelve foot here. It's going to have can, can lever out. So that way you have coverage for sun. Uh, outlets on the back, outlets in the front, pressure treated. I want two doors on the side. Uh, one of them have a steps, the other one having a ramp to load in. Uh, and, and if the singers or whatever, they just walk in and be, but if you have all, uh, equipment, have the ramp for that.
So. So a couple of questions, um, Daryl, would that interfere at all with the overflow parking for court services?
Well, from what I've known, what we have in for parking for court lately. That we're fine.
And then. Is that? Is that, i- i- is that overkill for our little park? Cause I know we got Hutchinson Ferry Park, where we're going to do bigger events. And we were thinking we'd hold our events back. In Town Green until they got bigger. Well, I think they're going to get bigger any minute now, but I don't know.
Well, the, the stays at Fulton County that we rent, that's about the size of it.
It's about the size, okay.
And it was, if you really think thirty foot and you think five, five musicians and a band. To me, I play a band.
Let me ask you this.
Ma'am?
Can you get a quote for, and Ruby, I know we, we fell in love with the one Rocky Reeves all states, but could you get a quote for one like Fulton County? Cause that one you could move and we could actually move that to the other park if we wanted to use it. You hate that idea?
No, I mean. Yeah.
You know, because that one is mobile. I mean, Fulton County's brought their stage down to.
They have a, a tractor.
Tractor thing.
Tractor, like eighteen wheeler that hauls it.
It seems like if we're going up to fifty thousand.
I mean, you have CDLs pulling it around.
But I mean, again, it'd be worth seeing what it would.
Just double tuck in.
Yeah. Sure. And what, what I do, if you want, I'll get quotes for both. I just hate, I just don't want to, let's see which way we want to go. Tell me which way to go, because I don't want to get contractors back out here and waste their time. And had to get drawing up and then it's a lot of work if I can't give them.
So you, you know about what the, the one thing costs, right?
Yes.
So real quick, find out what the other thing costs.
I can do that.
We can tell you.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll draw it up for you.
How about that? Okay, send us a picture.
I'll draw it up for you.
Like the movie night, like we could have still used it over, we could have moved the movie over here and had that coverage. Whereas we had no coverage and we had to stop.
And that's what I wanted to put in it is you remember, we used to have the projection, the roller that come down on amount one in, in it. And then that way when it rolls down, you have your movies, movie night if it rains.
Well, if we said we love that idea today. Um, how soon could it be built?
Well, I.
You gotta take it out to bid, so it's going to be.
And then had to bring it to you and then you had to agree on it.
So now before our event, so just know that.
Can I ask this? I mean, I, I know we have an election coming up. I mean, who knows what happens? But if not, are, are. Are you two ladies still going to do the community organizing thing? Cause I'd hate to dump money into a stage and not have somebody to, to do that.
What's your name for to you?
We're reaching the stage, it's not for me, it's for the community.
No, and I get that, but.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure. I'm quite sure at that point in time, that will be decision made.
Okay, well, cool. Well, thank you. I just want to make sure before we spend fifty grand, we have somebody in charge of that. It doesn't.
I know exactly what y'all need me to do. I'll, I'll bring you something back there.
Nope, it's worth looking into.
As ma'am.
Thank you, dear.
All right. Uh, next was a conversation that probably should have had a little more conversation between you and I before. This, we were intending to talk, just didn't get to it. So South Fulton Scenic Byway. Was designated back in the eighties by Fulton County. There's a South or Fulton County. Scenic Byway program that has some rules attached to it that was adopted by Fulton County back in the eighties. Uh, we have in our zoning several things that refer to it. Uh, at some level or another, you know, uh, buffer conditions that are on scenic roads, some of those we've designated, some of them for the other thing. Long story short is we've never adopted the Fulton County scenic byway thing. Um, and there needs to be a conversation about, you know. Where that contradicts our zoning. I mean, our zoning is something that we've all talked about and voted on. So we've been treating it as if where it contradicts our zoning, it is. I, I, I'm getting there. We've created it as where it contradicts our zoning, our zoning rules. Uh, it was one of the things that came up in the comp plan process and is, is on the comp plan work. Plan, the need to look at that and figure out how to address those discrepancies. And so I just wanted to talk about, you know, how we do that and, and how we prioritize that, because to the point that Robbie made earlier. Our planning department right now. Doesn't have a lot of capacity and, and you know, it's, it's one of those things that requires some planning department work. Um, and that's the reason that we haven't done some of that work product, right? Because it's just hard to prioritize. Uh, but you know, it, it is one of those places where there's confusion sometimes about. You know, wait a minute, weren't we supposed to do this? And like, well, no, no, it's not in our zoning, but it's in this thing, you know? Uh, and I don't think we should just adopt it as it is because it conflicts with our zoning.
It does, it really doesn't, because it doesn't even specify the um, the buffer distance.
Oh, really?
No. So I looked in there, because I was thinking, wait, the scenic highway was a hundred and fifty feet. It doesn't. Our scenic roads, which we still don't have a map for in our zoning, anyway, but that specifies a hundred and fifty. But really what it just says is really no development along it that you can see, which is also in our zoning. The only thing I think that we need that actually solidifies this is that we're, you know. Right now, we're being asked to give variances, you know, consider variances about it, because it doesn't have that extra teeth. No, by the way. We should, so I don't know that we actually need zoning, I, I mean, planning commission to um, adopt that.
But that's, I guess that's the question. You know, the, the city council. Can look at everything they want to look at when they decide whether variances are allowed or not, right? And this is one of those elements they might want to look at. The question of whether we need to. Figure out how to reference it appropriately in the zoning is what the work plan asks for, basically.
So the, the question is if, if in the short term work program, it mentioned uh, an update to the scenic byway plan. Um, the question is what do we want out of that? If it's, if it's zoning changes, we can make the changes in the zoning. We don't really need to address the plan. Um, the question is, do we need to look at that document and update it? And, and then we need to determine what do we want out of that? Are we looking for regulation? Are we just looking for documentation of existing conditions, which was a big part of? Um, uh, what we got from Fulton County.
And, and Fulton County. So I talked to David Clark about this, who is the person who the. You know, if Fulton County was doing this right now, that would come from his department. Of course, this is way before he worked for Fulton County. Uh, they're not sure that they can find, but they're looking for, you know, is there an electronic document somewhere that's not a second scan of a scan? You know, the actual word document that this was done in forty years ago, that's even a thing, right? So they're, they're trying to track that down. Uh, but you know, he said, look, these kinds of studies, that's a couple, few hundred thousand dollar study. And, and the reality is, if you look at it now, it refers to a lot of historical structures and things like that that don't even exist anymore. And so there is the question, do we actually need to update it? Or are we just referencing out to its intention, right?
Right.
That can be easy, the other thing is hard.
Right.
Well, my preference is, since I worked on that original committee. Just to say that a whole lot of community work went into that committee. Um, went into that quarter management plan and that project. Um. I don't think, hearing what Tom said, when the cities municipalize, they, the DOT, I guess, just. Through the dark documents at them and washed their hands of it. And shame on them, because it was a Georgia state program for Pete's sake to just say, eh, you know? And that's why we were having problems now. Palmetto didn't abide by their portion of it on Cochran Mill Road. But um, all that to say. I would like to see the city, you say the city never adopted it, it should have. We just, you know, had other things on our plate in two thousand and seven, right? Think we should adopt it, even if it's, it's as a historical document and then go from there. But it needs to be formally accepted that we, you know, acknowledge we were the first scenic byway in Georgia and it was something this community wanted. And then after that, if it's a smaller document or say, well, how do we manage the scenic byway anymore? Cause now we have historic crossroads that want to build on it and they, they want their buildings with no buffer run in the, on the corner. How does that work? We just need some policy and guideline along that as a council to say. Is that okay in this area? Or you know, we just need to have those discussions. But. I know we're busy, but really even. Not enough, let's don't wait another ten years to happen, because we've got some pending the development. We're going to have to answer those questions sooner than later.
I think, I think in the meantime, one of the thoughts, just based on what you were saying. You know, trying to refer to that as you're thinking about variances and whatnot, right? This is one of those other community standards issue. Now it's forty years old, but it was a thing at the time. And we should consider it too, right? Just another thing that we should consider in the meantime, until we. You know, can hire somebody basically to run a process. And that may just be in the context of the next comp plan or whatever, honestly, because again, I'm thinking about time and staff.
Right.
Right.
That works for me to just think about it and acknowledge.
But we could put it in front of the, I don't know if, if all the council members are familiar with it. Make sure that everybody gets a copy. Take a look at it, see what you think you might want out of. An update of it or an interpretation of it or an adoption of it. And maybe have that discussion next month and that would draw the, the outlines around what that process will be.
Hopefully, I mean, if we're lucky, we get an editable version of it. The, the problem with just retyping the whole thing, I mean, you can retype the words, but that thing is full of photographs. And again, those are black and white prints of color photographs that have been photocopied twice, like you can't even see what it is. Right? And so like, it, it's just, it's going to be hard to recreate if we can't find the document, right? Um, but at very least, the words can tell you what, what they were talking about. So we'll, we'll get that one way or another to the council.
Okay.
What, what type of force or bearing does that have on us? I mean, I'm, I'm.
It doesn't, because we weren't a party to.
Okay, right. Right now, none. And the question is, do we want it to? Do you all want to, oh, give it some, give it some? Right.
But at the very minimum, Mike, and I know you, you've had this on your to do list. We need that map of the scenic roads codified, because we can't continue to tell developers. Scenic roads require a hundred and fifty buffer when we don't, we say there's a map in our zoning and there's no map. So we need to get that done.
The map just reflects what's in words.
But it doesn't list the road either.
Different kinds of references to those roads in the zoning. So we, I, I agree, we need to clean that up. I agree.
Okay. Anything else anybody has for a good order? Otherwise, we're off till.
Something, uh, the November work session.
Oh, right, right.
So.
Find the problem.
Um, I'm very excited that we're having early voting here at Chat Hill City Hall.
Rather than having to run into Fulton.
Yes. Um, however, as I was working on that schedule yesterday, I realized we have a work session November second. And early voting closes on November third, so we won't have use of this building. Um, our November council meeting is again going to be on a Thursday. Um, November ninth, because of the election on November seventh. So I thought maybe we could do something similar to today, maybe do a two o'clock work session. Or we could do something else.
I mean, the, the good news, bad news of that is it compresses it to one day of the month and it doesn't get in the way of the voting. The bad news is the state stinks, you know? I, I mean, the, Dana's recommendation is that we put them together.
It is what it is. That's only once every five years. That's acceptable. Thank you.
So let's, we need to do a motion then to change our.
I mean, we can, I think we'll have to officially do it, but we could do it at the October meeting. I, I just will be prepared with the date.
Let's, let's, let's just make sure that happens appropriately. And then. We're done for now. See you at six.
Yes.